Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call tonight's Township of Howell Planning Board special meeting to order. Eileen, opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be opened at adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on September 25th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Court Press and the Store Ledger. Second, on September 25th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on September 25th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits, which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boyle?
Present.
Mr. Durado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick has been excused. Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse has been excused. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett?
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag, and please remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops and first responders, both here and abroad. Paul?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Seeing this is a special meeting, we will move right into the application in front of the board tonight. That is case number SP 1052, Mammoth Commerce Center. The application is for preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance. The application of Mammoth Commerce Center LLC as applicant and Lawrence Katz and Felix Feister as owners seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with ancillary bulk variance and design waivers and exceptions to construct nine warehouse buildings ranging in size from 85,600 to 150,000 square feet and equalling approximately 1,242,102 square feet in total. Five full movement access drives along Randolph Road, parking for 706 vehicles, 142 trailer parking spaces, 234 loading spaces, and five monument-style site identification signs on premises known as Block 5, Lots 2 and 3 at the intersection of Randolph Road and Oakland Road. And if you want to hear the or view the scenario of how this application has moved on, please refer to the tonight's agenda. Counselor?
Good evening. Adam Fiala of Silks Commissing Gross. We are the attorneys for Mammoth Commerce Center LLC, the applicant this evening. As the chairman explained the project, I'll move forward right along to just note that at the end of the September 19th hearing, the last time we were here, we had completed our direct testimony of our traffic engineer, Justin Taylor. He had been cross-examined by the objectors attorney, and we were in the middle of public questions. And following that September 19th hearing, we submitted a couple of revised documents at the planning board's request. We submitted a revised driveway access-
Mr. Fiala, my recollection was, we asked if you were going to submit it.
Yes.
So you voluntarily, you know, you thought it was, your applicant thought it was prudent to submit it.
Correct. So we submitted a revised driveway access exhibit. It was revised from the previous one we had submitted showing the internal loop, and the revisions were an alternative design after taking into account comments from the planning board. We also submitted a revised traffic supplemental letter that discussed levels of service for the driveways that did not have the traffic signal being built factoring in the level of service, and also took into account the revised driveway access exhibit, meaning that some of the driveways weren't full movement, they were egress only or ingress only. So as we had stated at the previous hearing, we still prefer our original design, but the applicant is willing to move forward with this exhibit showing the internal loop, and we believe both designs are safe and efficient.
Mr. Fiala, just before you continue, just by way of housekeeping, Mr. Chairman, I think we should probably open it up. There are other counsel who want to enter their appearance.
Thank you. Board members Craig Bossong, Beazemboy, O S S as in Sam, O N G from the law firm Florio Perucci Steinhardt &amp; Capelli representing the objectors known as Hope.
And counsel, the last list you gave us of the individuals who comprise that organization, that's still accurate, hasn't grown or shrunk at all?
Yes, sir, it's still accurate.
Okay.
Counselor, just before you start, no, sorry. I just would like to remind the audience, the public, about we have a process here. I see some new faces. What we do is, we allow the applicant to put on his complete case, and you'll be able to cross-examine each witness that he calls up, ask them questions about what they testified on. After the applicant finishes their case, the opposition attorney will put on his case. And once he's done with his case, then we will open it up to the public to allow you to make comments, testify on this application. I guarantee you that you will be able to have a voice and will listen to what you say. But you have to bear with us, this is a process, it follows what's governed by the municipal land use law, and it provides us an orderly course to go through this. Okay?
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recall Justin Taylor to strictly discuss the revisions that were made from the previous hearing. So, Mr. Taylor, you understand that you are still under oath, correct?
I do.
Can you explain the changes that were made since the September 19th hearing?
At the request of the chair of the board, we had discussed the reduction in radii for the egress movements of the various driveways to queue the trucks that right turns out of the site would not be permitted. That would go along with the signage that is proposed for those driveways. It was requested that we put a plan together showing that, and so we updated our driveway vehicle circulation exhibit and submitted to the board. It is what is on the screen behind you. On this plan, nothing has changed from a circulation standpoint, with the exception that every egress driveway, every radius, they have been reduced to five feet. And what this shows is that vehicles can still turn into and out of the driveways. The five feet is still acceptable for a passenger vehicle to make a right-hand turn, given the proposed width of Randolph Road. But it will, as I said, further encourage drivers to pay attention, truck drivers to pay attention to the prohibition for right-hand turns.
And can you discuss the revised calculations for the level of services for the driveways?
Absolutely. Again, at the last meeting, some concern was raised that in our simulation model, we had not taken into account the stop control at the intersection of 547 and Randolph Road. We had the ability to go back and recalibrate the model to eliminate that signal and rerun the capacity analyses for the various driveways under the originally proposed five-fold movement driveway configuration, as well as the alternate configuration that reduces the number of egress locations to three. Based upon those analyses, what we find is that each of the driveways will operate a level of service C or better during the peak hours that we studied. And so based on that, it's my opinion that even without the installation of the signal, that the driveways will operate safely and efficiently.
And those calculations, they assumed a full buildout of the waste transfer station, correct?
That is correct. These are full buildout of our site, as well as the two adjacent developments, the waste transfer station and 41 Randolph.
So this is the most conservative calculation?
That's correct.
So in your professional opinion, will the revised driveway access significantly impact traffic operations?
No.
And will the revised driveway access operate safely and efficiently?
Yes, it will.
That's all I have for this witness.
Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, do you have a copy of that analysis that I could look at?
We submitted this, I have one copy right now that I can hand to the board.
Board secretarial.
Lord, did our expert get one too? While traffic?
Yes.
Do you have any comments on it, Mr. Wensky?
Well, yeah, I mean, my concern is, with the analysis that was submitted for the, you know, the intersection of Randolph and Lakewood Farmingdale Road staying as a stop-controlled signal, the analysis used for the site access driveways didn't change from a distribution standpoint, meaning that whether there's a signal there or not, the applicant engineer feels the distribution out of the site's going to remain the same. And I don't agree with that. The delay and the queue from Lakewood Farmingdale Road down Randolph during the PM conditions specifically is about 1,300 feet of vehicle queue and around 1,300 seconds. And, you know, motorists exiting the site will see this, and, you know, they're going to choose probably more aggressively to make that right turn, to increase the volume towards Oakland Road. To get to, you know, 195, to go via Randolph Road, Lakewood Farmingdale Road, or Oakland Road to Lakewood Farmingdale Road is pretty much a similar, you know, distance. And if one way is, you know, 10 minutes of delay just to get to Lakewood Farmingdale Road, and the other way is free-moving, you know, I'm going to go right. And, you know, there's no prohibition, there's no weight limit restriction on Randolph Road, there's no weight limit restriction on Oakland Road, I'm going to make that turn, I got to get to where I'm going, there's delay that way. Now, I'm negotiating a five-foot curb radius, I'm a tractor-trailer, I can't make this move. I don't know the impact of Oakland-Randolph now with the increased volumes. I don't know the impact to Brook Road and Oakland Road on these increased volumes, so I'm still concerned.
So to hit that a little bit, from an operational standpoint of the driveways, the right turn out is an easier maneuver to make than a left turn out, right? There's more capacity in that, we're only turning against one flow of traffic. So the operation of the driveways should drivers determine to make a right instead of a left. The delays will actually go down, and the driveways will operate at better levels of service than are projected here because of the increase in right-hand turns. From an off-site impact, the drivers may decide to go that way, the passenger cars may decide to go to Oakland and up to Randolph Road, but it's not going to change, and it may actually improve the operation of the site driveways.
And how frequently would it have that type of queuing that the board traffic engineer mentioned?
That's actually a great question. So the projected queue that we're talking about is the 95th percentile queue, which means 5% of the time during the busiest peak hour, the queue will be that long. So in reality, 99% of the time, maybe 99.5% of the time, it won't be that long. But there's one, you know, 5% of the time during that busiest peak hour, it may back up that far. So the likelihood of vehicles backed all the way to this point really isn't all that likely, other than maybe a handful of times during an hour. The other thing to remember is that the volume in that queue is associated with two other developments on the project. And these volumes aren't passing our driveways, these volumes are actually exiting driveways further to the west, closer to the stop sign. And so realistically, the queue may not even back up that far, because those vehicles are exiting those driveways.
Well, Mr. Taylor, if I could, Mr. Taylor, previous testimony on your part and previous analysis, I believe, had that queue at 900 feet, all right? And that, I believe, was without the waste transfer station.
So all of our no-build analysis includes the waste transfer station. And a Phase 4 full buildout, complete buildout of our site, the queue was 50, I believe it's 54 vehicles, which translates to about 1,300 feet, as Mr. Wensky stated. We can go back and look at a no-build condition. I believe it's about 900 feet without our traffic in there, and I think that may be the number that the chairman's referring to.
I'm still uncomfortable with your testimony that you feel that your site access drives, which, well, let me rephrase that question. Are you, how many of your site access drives are within that 1,300-foot queue?
So for the 54 vehicles, I believe it's the, if we refer to the exhibit up on the screen, it would be driveway A and driveway B. Would fall within that 1,300-foot queue. Now, yeah, so those two, it's my understanding that those two are within that distance.
There's an internal loop to get to the other driveways, correct?
That is correct. On-site circulation would allow vehicles to circulate to the other driveways to exit the facility.
So my concern is, is that realistically, what we're talking about here is that, as Mr. Wensky indicated, there will be a diversion of traffic when the queue gets excessive, that they will seek, like water, the easiest path to go, which we don't know what the impact is on Oakland Road at the intersection of Lakewood Farmingdale Road, because that hasn't been studied, correct?
As an off-site intersection, we did not, we did not look at that.
So you can't represent with any certainty that the diversion of vehicles will not have an adverse impact on that, on Oakland Road?
I can represent that the diversion of traffic will not have an adverse impact on the operation and safety of the driveways of the site. We haven't looked at it going out Oakland, because that is another public roadway that vehicles are allowed to traverse. They would also be a right-hand turn out of Oakland onto Randolph Road, I mean, onto County Route 547. But it's not something that we looked at, because it is an off-site intersection.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Taylor, with the five-foot radius, do you think it's safe, or I don't know if you looked at it, for a tractor-trailer to make a right turn out of the site driveways?
No, the intention of the five-foot driveway was to prohibit and discourage tractor-trailers from turning right.
But isn't it reasonable to assume that if there's extensive delay at the Randolph Road approach to Lakewood Farmingdale Road, that some of those drivers, although encouraged to go left, may be aggressive and make that right turn?
I think the prohibition of left-hand turns for trucks, as well as the granting of Title 39, will serve to discourage tractor-trailers from making that left-hand, or that right-hand turn.
When you say Title 39, like what are you referring to?
We agreed, I believe, at the last hearing, to grant Title 39 abilities for the police to enforce those, the turn prohibition. And so then they could be ticketed for making that right-hand turn.
So you're saying that, what regulation would be adopted that would be allowed to, that would be enforced? That you're going to, that would be a four-ton, 10-ton weight limit restriction on Randolph Road?
No, we would have to restrict the full left-hand, right-hand turn for tractor-trailers, a no-truck turn out of the driveways.
Specifically to tractor-trailers, or any?
I think we prohibit tractor-trailers, correct?
I mean, I don't think that's possible, if you can't make specific regulations targeting a certain type of vehicle, you would have to target a weight limit restriction. And I've never seen a specific regulation before where it restricted a weight limit for turning movement where other trucks are permitted on that same road. I mean, you're not restricting tractor-trailers to Randolph Road, you're just saying that these tractor-trailers can't make a left out of the site, and I just never seen that sort of regulation before.
We, sorry.
Go ahead.
We do truck turning restrictions for commercial developments on a semi-regular basis, and it's something that needs to be adopted by the township. But given the ability of vehicles to turn left and right, and the complications that it is for larger vehicles, we definitely have done turn restrictions out of driveways for trucks.
And even with, if this regulation and the governing body were to adopt it, which we can't assume, I mean, with that delay at the Randolph Road approach because of the non-traffic signal and the stop-control condition, still, you would need an officer out there pretty much every day to make sure people are following the rules, and they don't get aggressive, and they do make that right turn, they don't jump the curb, they don't approach, they don't overlap into the opposing driveway, and it would become, could become a burden if that, you know, delay continues to exist. I mean, that's somewhat reasonable, granted.
I mean, I think what we're talking about is tractor-trailers for private haulers that are within this development. And if each one of those tenants is instructed that their tractor-trailers are not allowed to make right-hand turns out, and it's enforceable and ticketable, and possibly even within the condo association, the ability to punish those maneuvers, I think it is something that can be accomplished.
And the passenger vehicles exiting the site, the high volume, the number of passenger vehicles exiting the site where there is no right-turn restriction, would you think that would increase from the distribution you have or currently in the plan if that there's a heavy significant delay due to that stop-control condition?
I think, as I stated, if there were a higher percentage of vehicles turning right, the delay for each one of the proposed driveways would decrease from what's reported in our study.
What about the impact to Randolph Road and Oakland Road? Have you studied that?
We have not studied that, no.
With the increased volume and change of distribution?
No, we haven't.
What about the intersection of Oakland Road and Brook Road, Lakewood Allen Road, did you study any sort of increase in volume of that due to change in distribution?
No, we did not. As I said, we're talking about vehicles that want to go to County Route 547, right? That's who would make the left out of there. And so, one, I don't think they would get to Brook Road, but two, no, we didn't take a look at it as an off-site intersection. Now, I can also say that we are currently pursuing the installation of a traffic signal at 547. We have resubmitted to the county the additional information that they requested, and it's under review at that point.
I mean, would you consider Oakland Road and Randolph Road an on-site intersection, considering it's at your frontage and you're already making improvements to that intersection?
I would not, no. I think we are making improvements because it was requested by the township, but no, I would not consider that an on-site intersection.
I would be curious to see, you know, or some thought be given to what kind of change the distribution pattern would be, would exist if, you know, due to the stop-control condition and the delays that they're anticipating, and what happens with the turning movements at, you know, Randolph and Oakland. And that's something, you know, we should consider.
I agree with our traffic engineer in that I think that's a reasonable accommodation since it's a condition that will most likely occur. We're not asking for something that's a possibility, we're asking for something that's a likelihood. And I'm very, very troubled by the fact that we're relying upon police enforcement to prevent that left turn because of the traffic congestion that will be on Randolph Road.
I mean, I don't believe that that's the only thing. I think that's something that's, you know, it's a combination of the various measures that we've proposed that will work to enforce, discourage, and then enforce the turn prohibition.
That's just one of the many measures that we have discussed.
I understand that, but at the last meeting, all right, or the meeting before that, your co-counsel put on the record that you would only contribute your fair share of the cost for a traffic signal.
Well, Mr. Chair, I also want to be very clear about, this planning board does not get into who's going to pay for it. The sole jurisdiction this planning board has is what impact does it have on the safety of ingress and egress if it exists, or if it doesn't exist. So while Ms. Concher did say that, I think I piped up at that point as well. It's really, I think, that clouds what we're looking at and distracts us from what is purely within our jurisdiction. So I want to be very clear for the record that we don't care who pays for it, whether it's 100% paid for by this applicant, whether there's a pro-rata contribution by this applicant. What our concern is, what impact does it have on the ingress and egress if it's there or not there?
Right, and my point is, is that there's a degree of uncertainty if that intersection will be signalized.
Yes.
Because we have no control over that. And I'm just exploring and voicing the concern about, because that does directly impact at least two of your driveways, according to your testimony.
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions also, when you're ready for me.
Please, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So just in terms of tractor-trailer is sort of a nonspecific term, were you talking about like a specific wheelbase?
I would think we would deliver all tractor-trailers, all articulated vehicles.
All, okay, all articulated vehicles.
What about single-unit vehicle?
We have the ability to, if the board should think that that's a reasonable condition, I think-
That's not what I'm, that's not what we're asking, what the board feels. I'm trying to pry down and understand what your testimony is. So when you were talking about restricting the movements of tractor-trailers, I just wanted more specificity as exactly what it was you were testifying to.
So when we discuss tractor-trailers, we're talking about articulated vehicles.
Okay. Also, so, you know, I understand what you're saying about Title 39. It does happen. We obviously don't have the ability to grant that to you, but is your testimony regarding the safety and the level of service dependent upon a Title 39 agreement? Or does all of this still work if there is no Title 39 agreement that the governing body will approve?
It's my opinion that it would work without the Title 39. That would serve to reinforce, but the signage and the curb modifications, as well as the education of the tenants, would serve to help prohibit those vehicles from turning right.
So then, all the testimony you just gave about Title 39, you're saying it would be helpful, but at the end of the day, it's not, it's not necessary?
Yes, I think it's something that we have represented that we will pursue, should this be approved.
Does the absence of a Title 39 agreement change any of your assumptions that you used, or the conclusions that you have reached, or?
No, it does not.
So there is no traffic pattern at all that would change in the absence of a Title 39 agreement?
No, there's not.
So then why would we need one?
Title 39 allows the police to enforce-
I know what it does, but if you don't need it, if you're saying it all works well without a Title 39 agreement, what was, what's the necessity of it?
I believe it was something that was brought to our attention if we would consider it, and we agreed to that condition.
Who asked you to consider it?
Honestly, I don't-
I don't remember.
I thought it came from the-
Counsel, do you remember?
I thought it came from the board. Even if that's not the case, if it's something that would help encourage, just be one measure to help encourage and enforce this, it's just an added measure of safety to be conservative.
But the testimony is, even if it's an added measure, it doesn't change anything? There's no count that changes anything?
Correct. It's to help enforce, to enforce the assumptions, the opinions that have been presented.
Okay. There was some testimony regarding- There was some testimony regarding when the queue might happen. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said that the worst-case scenario would be 5% of the time during the peak hours. Looking at that, in overall hours, it would happen, I guess, .5% of the time?
So I have to do the calculation to figure out what five minutes out of 24 hours would be?
Well, you gave us a number before, though, so how'd you come up with that number?
Probably over 99% of the time. I can give you an exact figure.
So, all right, but 5%, though, is still?
5% during the busiest evening peak hour is when that happens.
And then overall, you're saying less than 1% of the time?
Yes. It's just the evening peak hour.
That's just the evening peak hour, right? Not the AM?
So it would be .35%.
So.
So 99.65% of the time.
Okay. So for what the board is looking at principally with this, which is the safety of the ingress and egress, does it matter if it's dangerous 5% of the time, or .something% of the time, or 50% of the time? I mean, is there an acceptable level of when it's dangerous or not that that makes a difference when the queue happens?
I think the results of the studies show that it's not dangerous any part of the time. The analyses that were requested were to incorporate the, or the removal of the traffic signal, which we then presented within our supplemental report of September 30th, the analyses and the delays for the individual driveways. And what that shows is that during these busy peak hours, with the removal of the traffic signal, we're anticipating levels of service C or better on all of the driveway approaches.
So then for what the board has to consider, it would be your testimony that 5% or whatever percent, it doesn't make a difference, because the result for each one of the proposed driveways is that it's safe?
That's correct.
How many, I'm just trying to understand the colloquy that you had with the board's traffic engineer. It's a little above, you know, what I do. So I'm trying to bring it down to what I can understand, and hopefully everybody else, everyone else may understand it already. I may be the slowest one in the room, I don't know. But what intersections did you analyze for the report that led to your conclusion that ingress and egress was safe for all of the proposed driveways?
So as part of the traffic study, we analyzed the intersection of Brook Road and Lakewood Allenwood Road, Oakland Road and Randolph Road, Randolph Road and the five-site driveways, Randolph Road and Lakewood Farmingdale Road, Lakewood Farmingdale Road and Maxim Road, and Lakewood Farmingdale Road and Old Tavern Road, Herbertsville Road.
Okay. Now, your analysis of those intersections for, with regard to your most recent submission, which assumes no traffic signal, did, I mean, did you use the same numbers that you used with the traffic signal at those intersections, or were they changed at all?
Yes, no, they were the same numbers as utilized with the traffic signal. The only change in that was the removal of the traffic signal within the synchro model. So it remains as an unsignalized intersection.
But, I mean, so is it your testimony that those intersections would not be influenced at all?
The off-site intersections? No.
I'm just, these, those intersections you just provided, however you want to characterize them, those are the specific ones that I'm asking about, the ones you just identified?
That's correct. So we anticipate no change in the operation of those driveways, I mean, of those intersections, without the installation of the traffic signal, as part of this analysis.
Can I ask a quick, so to clarify, so for Brooklyn, for Oakland Road and Randolph Road, you see no change in volume through that intersection, whether a signal is existing or built at Randolph and Lakewood Farmingdale or not?
So based on the analyses that we've submitted, there will be no change in the operation of Oakland Road and Randolph Road. That's correct.
My question is the volumes. There's no change in volume through that intersection?
Based on the analyses that we provided, no, there's no change in volume through that intersection.
All the amount of traffic leaving, going to and from the site will continue to go through Lakewood, Farmingdale Road, and Randolph Road regardless if there's a signal or not, or the stop control condition with the delays that are anticipated.
Based on the analyses that we provided, yes, that's the assumption.
Great, thanks.
And with regard to all of the intersections that have been identified tonight, when you did your analysis and you've reached your conclusion, that was based upon all of these intersections operating? It wasn't just a particular intersection's impact at a particular time, but all of them operating collectively?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay. So I guess, let me see if I can be more clear.
Maybe I'll just explain what we did.
Okay.
We had a model that was built, and that's the foundation of the traffic study. It's been the foundation of all the analyses we've given the board up to this analysis. It contemplated in the build condition, the installation of that traffic signal, and the impact of that, and the ripple of that through the network. As requested by the board, we removed that traffic signal in the build condition. And then we analyzed the operation of the driveways to ensure, based on the analyses that we have, and that the driveways would operate safely and efficiently. So that's what we submitted. So the change in the network was simply the removal of that traffic signal.
So I guess, again, I apologize for my lack of clarity. So we have, how many total intersections were part of the report?
Ten, including the site driveways.
So ten intersections.
So that would be five driveways and five off-site intersections?
That's correct.
Okay, so five, okay. Of the five off-site intersections, so when you're looking at what the level of service is going to be, and whether ingress and egress is going to be safe, did you just kind of take a look at, let's just call them one through five for ease of reference, did you analyze it just saying, you know, what is intersection one going to do to the five drives? Or was it always, what are the collectively intersections, one, two, three, four, and five, going to do to the five access drives at the same time?
So we utilized the synchro software, which allows you to build a model on an aerial. So all the distances in between the intersections are the correct lengths, the correct distances apart. And the interaction between these intersections is taken into account when we do the analysis. So it's not as an isolated intersection individually, it's an overall network that we analyzed.
And so when you remove the signal, it, the overall network is still being analyzed?
That's correct.
But, Mr. Cucciara, what the applicant is not taking into account, which Mr. Wynski pointed out, is that when you remove the traffic signal from the intersection of Lakewood Allenwood Road and Randolph Road, you create additional delay and additional queue on the Randolph Road approach. And the applicant has not modified his model to take into account the diversion of traffic to avoid that queue. And that's what I am struggling with, is that it's not representing what probably will be a different scenario in the way of how traffic egresses from the site during the PMP hour.
I was moving glacially, but that was actually a little farther down on my list.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll take it off the list now.
So I think, as I've stated, should the vehicles turn right, then the operation of the driveways is going to improve. It really is. You know, we're going to have less delay, on average, at every one of those driveways should they, should the passenger vehicles turn right. So I think the impact of that is nominal comparative to what we provided at this point. I think we've demonstrated that with or without the signal, the driveways are going to operate safely and efficiently based upon the metrics of the synchro software.
Yeah, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
And again, as I've indicated, and I'll open this up to the board after, when, what you're saying is technically correct, I agree with you. But it does not take into account the effects of the diversion of that traffic to adjacent roadways. And that's what the board is struggling with.
Agreed, and I think the request of the board that we acquiesce to here was to review the operation of the driveways, and what impact to the driveways the removal of the signal would have, which is what's presented in this memo. The removal of that signal is contemplated in the analyses provided in this, in the additional submitted analyses. So I thought, hearing what the board had requested last time, was the analyses that we provided, showing that, again, with and without the signal, the driveways are going to operate safely and efficiently.
All right, I'm going to open it up to other, because I don't want to get into a debate here. And we'll circle back to this. And I know you've said this before, but for the sake of my memory, you're talking about now 1,300 foot of queuing at that 5% of that, you know? I know it's a very small amount of time. So that's the 1,300 feet without the stop signal. What was it when the model was run with the proposed signal?
Bear with me for just one second.
Absolutely. So 197 feet with the signal?
That's correct.
Versus 1,300 feet without?
That's correct.
Anyone else have any questions?
What you said last time about the amount of tractor-trailers. During the last meeting, you mentioned something about how many tractor-trailers per minute, or every two minutes. Do you recall that?
Yes, so during the full build-out, during the evening peak hour, we anticipate a total of 36 tractor-trailer trips, 10 in and 26 out, which translates into a tractor-trailer about every two minutes.
And what about the AM?
In the AM, it's approximately the same number with a slightly different, they have more incoming than outgoing, but it would be 27 in and eight out, for a total of 35. Again, about a truck every two minutes.
Truck every two minutes, okay, thank you.
And that's significantly.
That's trucks. Can you also tell us, the vehicles exiting?
So during the evening peak hour, you would have a total of 141 passenger car trips, 38 in and 103 out.
And that's significantly fewer than other permitted uses in the zone?
Yes, yes, absolutely. It's, you know, could be five times less than some of the permitted uses in the zone.
And it's fewer trucks, not only total, but trucks than other permitted uses, as you testified earlier, correct?
That's correct. Given the industrial permitted uses within the zone, it could be significantly fewer trucks as well.
Does the board have any other questions?
I just have one supplemental question. Just, we're talking about the 95th percent queue, and you're saying as well, it's only 5% of the time. Do you know the queues for the 50% or 85%?
Synchro doesn't actually calculate for an unsignalized intersection, anything other than a 95th percentile queue. It's a Poisson distribution. I could calculate that for you, but I don't have that number.
I thought you could change the setting in the model.
Not for unsignalized. For signalized, you can go anywhere from 50th, average, all the way up to 95th, but for unsignalized in synchro, you can, unfortunately.
And then the synchro model you ran with all the network, was that the dynamic network model?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just one other question. What are the other permitted uses in the zone that you looked at that you believe would create greater traffic than the proposed development here?
Yeah, I believe we submitted this on an exhibit. I can look at the exhibit list to see what other.
Well, I was asking Mr. Taylor, because he was testifying to it, so I wanted to see what he looked at.
Yeah, it was testifying about the exhibit that we submitted earlier.
Well, he can tell us, then. That was his testimony, he needs to clarify.
So the other uses that we looked at, which was A22 in the record, were manufacturing, general office, and medical office.
A medical office would create more traffic than this?
Medical office actually would generate almost five times the amount of traffic as this.
Vehicles and trucks, or just vehicles?
That would be vehicles. We would anticipate utilizing a 2% truck for medical office to have almost the same. It would be eight in and 20 out, or 28 in comparison to 36 during the peak hour.
And on the weekends, it would be significantly more trucks, correct?
That's correct.
I'm trying to clarify that. Which one of those users are going to have more trucks? There also was just a general statement that there are other permitted uses in the zone that would have greater truck traffic, and I'm trying to understand which one of those.
Absolutely. So based on an analysis, the manufacturing, which we could roughly fit approximately 750,000 square feet, would have, we would project 47 morning trucks in comparison to the 35 for the proposed development. The evening would be 51 in comparison to 36. And on Saturday, it would be 70, excuse me, compared to three.
And that's based on, you were assuming like a certain size development on the subject property?
That's correct.
What were you assuming?
We assumed 750,000 square feet of manufacturing, 500,000 square foot of office, and 400,000 square foot of medical office. And all these are based upon the land available, the impervious coverage requirements, and the parking requirements associated with each individual use.
Did you prepare like a concept plan of this, theoretical development plan?
No, we have not. This was based on an analysis done by our firm, but there hasn't been a plan prepared.
And those plan, well, this theoretical plan, it complies with all their design requirements and variance requirement, or design requirements, zoning requirement?
I think we would need to get to a fuller build-out. I think that's where you're going, a fuller build-out of a site plan to see if it complies with every single one of them. For example, the variance we're going for doesn't relate to the use itself, it relates to the landscaping of the buffer, so that likely wouldn't change. But obviously, if we did a full site plan, we would see how much, how many design waivers would be needed. But this was assuming no setback variances, and no impervious coverage variances, and no parking variances. Just do a broad concept of a rough traffic count, just to see the comparison.
A concept plan, which the board or our professional staff has not been able to look at, though.
Correct. There was no concept plan submitted.
Thank you.
Professionals have any other comments?
At this time, Mr. Chair.
Just on that note, but your concept model with the other permitted uses, compared to, what model did you use for yours, warehousing only?
That's correct. We used Land Use Code 150 in the ITE generation manual.
And that was just for warehousing?
That's correct.
Wasn't there testimony that there's a possibility that office space can be part of this?
No, I believe the testimony was, there's ancillary office that's associated with a warehouse use.
Was that included in your study?
Yep.
That ancillary use?
Yes.
And how much of space of ancillary use was used on yours?
So it's incorporated into the Land Use 150 of approximately 10%, within that, 10% to 15%, I would say. And so that goes within the Land Use Code that we utilized.
So 10% to 15% ancillary use of office space compared to the size of the warehouse?
Mr., that, does that include retail? I understand you could use at least 10% of that space for retail.
No, we didn't contemplate retail in this number, because it's not, I think we went over this at the last meeting, and I'm probably not the best one to testify to it. But my understanding is that the retail would be similar to the warehouse use.
But there can be at least 10% of that square footage for retail, which would include retail traffic in addition.
The, the I T E assumes a general warehouse, correct?
That's correct. And I, I mean, I, I think it's the, the, the plan of the applicant is not to have retail sales out of this. I know that off, the, the ordinance contemplates it, but I believe it was agreed at the last meeting that, that that's not what we're intending here. We're not intending to sell furniture out of-
Counsel, and again, it just may be me. I don't remember that conversation, so, I mean, is there in anticipation that there's going to be retail, or are you saying whether it's permitted or not, we're just not doing retail here?
I think the testimony, if I'm not mistaken, that the testimony was that we would comply with the ordinance and that if there's, and I believe the ordinance contemplates some ancillary retail sales. We don't anticipate, it, it's not like any of the tenants will be strictly retail. It would have to be ancillary to any warehouse.
I understand that, so, but what, I guess what I'm asking now is, does, was that taken into account in terms of like internal circulation and parking and ingress and egress and hours of operation for the retail versus everything else, and how that harmonizes within your overall analysis?
So we did not explicitly break out any type of retail use in our analysis.
Maybe we could clarify which witness talked about a retail use.
I'm not the best one to answer that.
And Ron, is it, is it fair that, seeing as none of us know what these tenants are going to be, that they can't necessarily say that there's not going to be retail there?
Well, no, I mean, look, they're not required to tell us who the tenants are going to be. They may not have it. However, they can, they are absolutely required to tell us what the use is going to be and how the use will operate, no matter who the tenant is.
Right.
Because that impacts on things that are directly within our jurisdiction, like the internal circulation, parking, the ingress and egress. And, and that's really why, you know, it becomes, it becomes relevant.
I, I could be mistaken, but I believe that the testimony was that there's not anticipated to be retail sales, but since we don't know the tenants, it could be some ancillary. It wouldn't be ten percent of it at all. It could be some ancillary retail, but it's just the permitted general warehouse use.
Well, so let's, let's focus there from a counsel. So, and, and that's reasonable. You're saying, we're going to do whatever you permit us to do, you know, in, in the ordinance. So let's just, you know, get down to it. What, you know, either you, counsel, or Peter, what does the ordinance permit by way of retail?
So the, the ordinance permits, under accessory uses, accessory use C, retail use shall be permitted as an accessory use to a permitted warehousing slash distribution facility, provided the percent of floor area devoted to a retail use shall be limited to a thousand square feet, or five percent of the gross floor area, whichever is less.
Which is a thousand square feet, yes.
So that would be a thousand square feet per building?
I would think so.
I would, I agree.
That's, when you're talking about buildings that are ranging from, I believe, eighty-something thousand square feet to, with the alternative driveway plan, I believe the biggest one is a hundred fifty-three thousand square feet. The most in a building could be a thousand square feet. It's a very minor percentage.
Yeah, but with nine buildings, that's nine thousand square feet, which is equivalent to a shopping center of retail. Does anyone else have questions here?
Yeah, I actually do, on the permitted use. On the, on the other use for the manufacturing, you said seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Is that one manufacturer, is that a, a series of manufacturers? And, and how did you figure that, that would generate more traffic than a warehouse?
So the manufacturing use, again, we look to the Institute of Transportation Engineers' publication trip generation.
Okay.
And that takes into account multiple different types of tenancy, whether it be single operator or multiple operator, knowing that it could be either one of those. And so we very generally utilize that to calculate the trip generation.
Okay, but the, the manufacturing business is not shipping and receiving, that would be controlled, especially in a facility that particular size. Whereas, your, your primary business is shipping and receiving. Shipping and receiving for a manufacturing facility would just be a function of their business. So in other words, I would receive my materials in the beginning of the day and then ship out my materials at the end of the day. It's just standard procedure, so I'm trying to figure out.
So during, so during those peak hours, you might actually have a greater impact to the surrounding roadway network than, than the warehouse? Because you have, you're concentrating those loads into those morning and evening peak hours. One of the nice things about a warehouse use is it actually distributes the traffic out over the whole day, because the business is coming to and going from the warehousing.
Well, depending on the size of the facility, if you're talking a couple hundred thousand square feet of manuf, which is, is, is really not even a possibility, probably in the state of New Jersey, because there's not that big of a manufacturing. For them to be competitive, they would have to probably receive it via raw materials via railcar, if you're talking that much of a manufacturing space. I mean, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, that's like an automotive plant. Three, I'm trying to wrap my head around how you came up with that use.
Are you just, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, because it sounded almost like the, are you discussing the market for that much manufacturing space?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how he determined that the traffic would be more for a manufacturing facility. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet of manufacturing spaces, I don't even know if there's that much left in Monmouth County, so how is that even a possibility?
Well, it was based on, that, that size was based on what's, the manufacturing was a permitted use and the size of the site and the impervious coverage and the setbacks. Do you want to speak about the concentration again on why it would be more traffic?
What we looked at was the trip generation rates from the I T E for that size. Now, it could be multiple tenants, it could be multiple, multiple different businesses, all in smaller numbers, but based on Land Use Code one forty, we projected there actually will be higher traffic during the peak commuting hours based upon that use.
I think maybe the question is more like, Justin, you do this, you know, often. How many seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot manufacturing facilities have you testified regarding?
There you go.
So you're, you're just talking about the market of it and how realistic that number is. We're just trying to show what would be permitted here, and you can take that into account of how realistic that is, but that's what is permitted at the site.
Right. But can I, can I just? I'm sorry, can I just ask a, a different question, which is more about relevance? What difference does it make? I mean, if the, if, if the board finds that the numbers for your project result in safe ingress and egress, or result in unsafe ingress and egress, what does it matter that there's another use that may also be unsafe?
You're correct about that. This is to put it into context of other permitted uses in the zone and the type of traffic it does generate. Because it is a very large property, so we understand that over one point two million square feet is large. So it's to put it into context of other permitted uses and to show that while these num, the numbers are fewer than what other permitted uses are. The focus, you're correct, are, it should be on the safety of the ingress and egress. We just wanted to show this as the relevance is to put it into context of other permitted uses in the zone.
Okay. But there is, just to be clear, you know, accepting that there are other permitted uses in the zone, and if, assuming that your witness's testimony is correct, that they would generate greater traffic, it doesn't speak to the safety of ingress and egress here, nor does it speak to the safety of ingress and egress for those other uses?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Board have any more questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. I'm fascinated with the idea of an agreement with Title thirty-nine. Until this application, I will admit that I've never heard of this agreement being introduced in any application. Have you introduced this particular facet in any other projects you've done?
Yes, you know, turn restrictions at driveways, we do on, on a regular basis.
Well, I'm assuming that a Title thirty-nine restriction would incorporate the police department.
It does.
And you've done an agreement with the police department?
It's not an agreement with the police department.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just, it's not an agreement with the police department, it's an agreement with the governing body that implicates the police department. I can tell you it's not uncommon, you know, happening in, in various municipalities, so it's not something that would be, you know, out of the realm. However, you know, what everyone needs to understand is this board has no ability to, you know, to grant it.
Correct. That would require a new ordinance, I would presume.
Yes, exactly.
That's my point. Thank you.
Well, Ron, just to clarify, too, the turning, any turning restriction that can come out of this board would be like a zoning, a zoning requirement based on any sort of condition of approval?
If the board had a restriction regarding turning, it would be subject, it would be related to the safety of the ingress and egress, and would be a condition of the approval. And absent a Title thirty-nine agreement, I mean, it's, it is a zoning issue.
Thank you.
Yeah. The enforcement of a, of a resolution is considered the same as enforcement of a zoning ordinance. So, you know, a zoning officer would still have the ability to go down and take a look and see whether it's operating properly and be able to issue summonses and things like that, but that's not, that's not the same level, you know, as a Title thirty-nine agreement.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Boston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a cou, couple of questions. Okay, the, just, Mr. Taylor, the revised exhibit, with the five-foot radius, what's the largest vehicle that could make a right turn with that five-foot radius?
We ran it for passenger vehicles. We didn't analyze it for anything larger than that.
Okay. The, does the queue we calculated discuss include any adjustments for trucks?
The queuing calculation that's projected incorporates the existing and projected truck percentages for the site.
Which was, what was the percentage? Do you remember? Was it twenty percent?
So we anticipate twenty percent during the peak hour, the percentages at the intersection. I can tell you exactly. But we utilize the existing truck percentages as well as the projected number of trucks for, for the analysis.
Okay. And then, does the model that you used assign vehicles to specific routes, or is it determined manually?
We utilized the synchro software to analyze the route to the, to the intersection.
So is that determined manually, then?
So we manually input the volumes associated with our project, rather than on the network. The existing base network is what's out there, and then the arrival at that intersection is based on, on the inputted volumes.
Okay, and then, if, I want to go back to the diagram that we just had up with the, the trip generation exhibit. Because I want to look at this fallacy of manufacturing is going to create more trucks. So we had agreed, or you had testified, the project is, well, first off, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, the five-hundred-thousand square feet, and the four-hundred-thousand square feet, you basically just maxed out the site for those types of uses, right?
We determined uses and sizes that would fit within the, the impervious coverage and the boundaries of the, the setback.
So what the, the, the largest possible manufacturing facility you could put on there, the largest medical facility, which is probably the size of a medium-sized hospital in the state, and the general office? That, that, that's really what was done to, to get these numbers, right? What, what would fit on that site, maxed out?
Yes.
Okay. So, now going back to the traffic, for your project, we had discussed at the last meeting, and you testified that the percentage of truck traffic to the total is about twenty percent, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so on the daily number, all the way to the right, we had discussed there'd be about four hundred trucks daily.
That's correct.
Okay. Manufacturing, what's the percentage of trucks to the total vehicles?
Approximately ten percent.
Okay. Total daily vehicles is twenty-five-thirty, correct?
That's correct.
At ten percent, that's two-hundred-and-fifty trucks, right?
Um, overall throughout the day.
Ten percent overall daily vehicles.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we're talking four hundred to two-fifty for manufacturing.
Yes.
Four, last time I checked, four hundred is greater than two-fifty?
Well, I, I think what we're looking at is the peak hour trip generation.
Greater than two-fifty?
Can, can he answer the question, please?
Simple question, is four hundred greater than two-fifty?
You've asked the question three times now, let's, let's ask, let's let him answer it.
And I'd like him to answer it in context, please.
So yes, four hundred is greater than two-fifty. However, the impact that we're all talking about, we've been talking about this entire evening, is during the peak hours. And during the peak hours, what we're looking at is actually a greater number of trucks for the manufacturing facility than for the, the proposed project.
Understood. So during the peak hours, there'd be more manufacturing. However, what we discussed the last time was there would be a tractor trailer on, less than once every two minutes throughout the entire course of the day for your project, as opposed to these residents being inconvenienced for two peak hours during the day.
Well, I wouldn't say two peak hours during that entire day. I think if we were to look at the daily volumes up there during each one of those proposed uses, let's look at the medical office.
I'm not worried about medical office, because there's no hospital-
Guys, guys, guys.
There's no hospital going into-
So then let's go back to the manufacturing-
Hold on, both of you are going to have to stop right now. We have a court reporter, we have to have a verbatim recording. One person talks at a time.
My apologies.
So, Counsel, you don't, why don't you restate your question, Counsel?
Well, I, wait, I'm just pointing out this, the fallacy of the manufacturing, the number of trucks created by the manufacturing facility is less than the number of trucks created by the project, and the number of trucks that we discussed the last meeting that was testified to would be one every two minutes throughout the course of the entire workday, whereas the manufacturing would be concentrated, and there's no disagreement, to a peak hour morning and a peak hour evening. But the residents would be inconvenienced a lot more during, as a result of the project with the trucks.
Can, we've not discussed residents being inconvenienced, I think that's making an assumption there. Can you just ask about the numbers, please?
Well, that's, that's his question. So, I mean, is that something that the, the witness agrees with or disagrees with, or is that something that's just irrelevant to what you were evaluating?
I would say, based on the table up there and the look at the daily traffic volumes, that the manufacturing is going to generate five, over five hundred more daily traffic volumes than what we have projected.
When you include automobile vehicles, at your maxed-out manufacturing number, correct?
So the trip generation associated with the manufacturing is five hundred, over five hundred trips greater during a day than what's proposed.
At a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot facility?
That's correct.
Okay. I have nothing for-
Counsel, can I just ask you a question?
Okay.
Yes. So at the last meeting, there was some back and forth about, I guess, the electronic data that supported the, the traffic study. That data was submitted on a flash drive. I just want to make sure you have no questions on it tonight?
No, my, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that if necessary on direct. We, I don't know if my traffic engineer has had a chance now.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure you had no questions on that. Okay, thank you.
If, can, I guess, there was a representation that the civil engineer was going to clean some stuff up tonight, too. Is he going to testify?
What do you mean specifically?
Merrill had said, your, your co-counsel had said that he was going to clean some stuff up, and we had spoken afterwards. I just want to make sure he's going to be called, because I have a couple of questions for him.
I, I don't believe our civil engineer is going to be called. We are planning on calling a representative of the applicant only to discuss the trailer parking spaces.
Okay.
And his experience with that. I think that might have been what, maybe that's what she was referring to, and we decided to go with a representative applicant rather than recalling the civil engineer who has been closed out.
Okay, well, then I can, I can ask Mr. Taylor if he knows. Do you know what the prior use on this property was?
That, that may be a better question if, to the civil engineer.
Well, that's, that's what I was, yeah. He, he had testified to horses.
Yeah, it was a horse race.
Right.
Well, Mr. Counsel, your, your planner's going to know that answer also, right?
Yes. Do you want to wait until the planner for that?
Yeah, that would-
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. This time, I will open it up to the public. If anyone would like to come up and-
And, and the questions should be focused on the testimony from tonight, not the testimony from the last meeting, because that was opened up for public questioning and the, and the witness was questioned at that time.
Thank you.
Right. And also, if you are represented by Mr. Basom, he has asked your questions. Only people that are not represented by counsel tonight. So ma'am, if you could just state and spell your name for the record?
Kathy Novak, N-O-V-A-K.
And your address?
16 Stratton Drive, S-T-R-A-T-T-O-N Drive, Howell.
Okay, go ahead.
She's not represented by help?
I represent myself. As a resident of Howell for 35 years. I would, I would question about your testimony tonight about the construction waste transfer station. You said that that was taken into consideration, the traffic from that was taken into consideration with your, your traffic report.
Yes.
What numbers, where did you get the information about that transfer station?
It was from a report prepared by McDonough and Ray Associates.
Okay. So, do you know how many trucks were going to go in and out of, from the transfer station based on his study?
I, I don't have that information in front of me now. It was incorporated into the background growth rate in the traffic study.
Okay. So, are you aware that their traffic study existed for, for one day? Their, their accounts were for one day? Their traffic study?
Can you repeat the question? I'm not sure I understand it myself.
So I think, ma'am, if what you're trying to say is they only evaluated data from one day, not over a period of time, is that what you're saying?
Yes, one day.
Okay. I utilized the data that was presented within their traffic study.
Okay. And?
Well, but, let's get an answer to the question, though. That's, yes, that's what you testified to, but were you aware of the number of days that that study encompassed?
Um, I was not, no.
So is there a minimum number of days that you think would be required in order to rely upon that?
Typically, if we're talking about traffic counts, we would conduct them only over one day typically. So if that's what you're referring to, then yes, it's standard traffic engineering practice.
So, Monmouth County pursued this further because they weren't, I guess, satisfied with this traffic study from McDonough and Ray. And they've invested $30,000 in a traffic study, which has not been, I don't believe it's been revealed yet.
That's correct. It's still not publicly available. I check on a regular basis with the county to obtain that, but it's still not publicly available yet.
And, and that was discussed the last hearing and nothing has changed since this hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I really feel that your statement that, that the transfer station has been taken into consideration is just totally flawed. Thank you.
Please, let's, let's not do this.
Can I just ask a quick question as a follow-up to that? When you're saying with the, the transfer station, Justin, your, your response to the question about the days of the study that were analyzed, or the number of days, did you just rely on their trip generation or did you rely on their counts?
We relied upon the trip generation as well as incorporated some of their counts that were done as part of that study.
And you, but you did additional counts?
That's correct. And, and there were, there were traffic counts as part of this study that were done over multiple days that were balanced up to, to get the highest volume on the roadway network that, that was possible.
So did you rely upon the McDonough and Ray study or that just confirmed the numbers you had done yourself?
So, at the beginning, at the beginning of this, this project, there was a study prepared for this project by McDonough and Ray. We utilized the data within that and then updated the analysis based on some comments that was received in the review process to come up with the conclusions that are within our study. So we utilized the traffic data that was conducted as part of the, the initial traffic impact study.
So, okay, so the traffic data you exclusively relied upon McDonough and Ray?
That's correct.
Okay.
The background traffic data.
And, and your testimony is, let's assume they just did one day. We don't know, but let's just assume they did one day.
No, no, no.
That's, that's standard.
I think what, what we were talking about was, I wasn't sure how many days were done to get the trip generation for the transfer station. We know, and it's in, in the study submitted, that we actually counted over multiple days throughout this roadway network to get the background traffic.
Well, that's kind of what I was, I was asking more in terms of the question that was asked to you.
So the transfer station, I do not know how many days that were used to get that.
Well, I'm just going back to what was relied upon for the transfer station. Because I'm, again, and I apologize, I'm just a little confused. So, the transfer station, what, not all of the data you used for the transfer station, you relied on McDonough and Ray, some of it you did, your firm did itself?
No, that's not correct. We utilized the, the data provided by McDonough and Ray for the, the amount of traffic to be utilized as background growth rate.
Okay.
Okay? And then, within that study, there were counts conducted as part of that study by McDonough and Ray. There were also other counts conducted by McDonough and Ray as part of the study for this project. And the two of those were correlated to come up with the roadway network that was utilized in this study.
Okay. Now going back, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, the only thing I might add is, it's not typical, when we would look to do analysis, to include developments that aren't approved. It was suggested, knowing that this was coming down the pike, that we include the transfer station. And we did so. But under normal circumstances, we wouldn't take into account things that hadn't been approved yet by a board.
Haven't been approved and aren't, I don't believe.
Haven't been approved by what board?
Haven't been approved, period.
By what? So, I mean, the transfer station is not going to go to a municipal board, right? Because that's, that's a, like a county recycling facility that has a different path that it takes, I think, doesn't it?
There's still some type of board review.
There's going to be some government entity that reviews it. So I'm saying, do you know what government entity? And you confirm that whatever government entity has jurisdiction, you know, never provided any level of approval?
I don't know.
Okay. Also, and I just want to get back to the amount of days, there was a question about how many days were, were the subject of evaluation. And I think my recollection was that McDonough and Ray, we didn't, for some element of it, we didn't know, but one day was enough, right?
So what was said was, I don't know the number of days that were utilized to collect the data to project for the transfer station.
Okay.
To project the number of trips that would be generated by the transfer station?
That's correct.
Okay. But what you also said was, if it was just one day, that's enough?
That, that's entirely possible, yes, based on the data they collected.
No, I'm not asking about entirely possible. I'm asking if we don't know how many days were the subject of the study and standard practice would say you have to have, you know, say, two days or three days, and we don't know whether there was two or three days. You know, I'm trying to get down to, you know, whether we know that the number of days that are required under standard engineering practices were, you know.
So I would say, standard engineering practice from a transportation standpoint would be to reach out and find out and obtain traffic studies produced by other engineering firms for the developments that are sub, that are in the general area, which is exactly what was done as part of this analysis. We rely on, we rely on the professionalism of other traffic engineers to conduct their studies.
But those?
Ethically and professionally. And we rely on the data that they provide us.
I, I under.
To come up with our background traffic.
I understand that. I'm not casting aspersions on anyone. However, they're not here.
Correct.
We can't ask them any questions. So you're here and you relied upon it, so you are our best witness to understand, you know, and confirm the accuracy, you know, and, and give the board a comfort level that it can rely upon that.
Understood.
So then, we don't, we don't know how many days and we don't know whether one day was enough?
So based upon the study, right, and I will quote from a McDonough and Ray study dated June 6, 2016.
And that's for the transfer station?
Traffic impact analysis proposed solid waste transfer station. It says, based upon information received from the applicant, the proposed solid waste transfer station will operate as follows. And then it gives a list of operations. And I, I mean, I can quote them if you would like, but, um...
Well, really, I was just getting down to the fact that there was a question about how many days, how the conclusions and data were collected, how many days of study that involved. And I kind of wanted to know if we know that, and if we do know that, whether that complies with the, you know, the, you know, general practices, you know, that would be employed. And also, whether it matters what day of the week, you know, the days are under the, you know, when you're conducting these types of analyses generally.
So, I'm not an expert in the waste transfer station operation. I haven't been contracted to, to learn more about it. So I rely upon the expertise of McDonough and Ray in their trip generation for the, for the proposed site. And based on that, they obtained information from the operator and the applicant for that, for that project. And that's itemized and set forth within that, their June 16, 2016 report. That's the background data that we used. If we're talking about traffic volumes, then I think we've been over this a couple of times in, in various hearings on the data that was utilized for this study. And it was conducted on multiple days, on multiple days of the week. And then that volume was the highest peak hour of each individual intersection was taken. And then it was all balanced up to the highest volume.
Then I'm very confused, Mr. Taylor, because when she asked you, or, or the, the resident stated that it was just one day, then why wouldn't your response be, no, that's not the case, it was several days and these were the days?
I think the question was about one day for the, the traffic study for the waste transfer station.
That's right.
Versus what, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, you just testified of the background volume was, the traffic counts were done, you said multiple days for our project.
That's correct.
Can I, can I stick with the question that was asked by the resident, though?
Yes.
So, do we know how many days were the subject of study for what she asked?
I, give me one second. While I'm looking for the date that it was collected, uh, let's see. Manual attorney movement counts at the intersection of Randolph Road and 547 in March of 2016 from 7:00 AM to 9:30 AM and from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. I do not have the number of days that that traffic data was collected, but I think it's irrelevant to the analysis in our report because we took the trip generation from that report, right? We utilized the count that was done, but we took the trip generation and then put that into our traffic model. We collected our background traffic, which is the components of the analysis, on multiple days.
So then, what you just read from, are you saying that that did not influence your analysis at all?
The trips that they did were utilized in our analysis. Right? And the, and the traffic volumes that were collected as part of this report, which I don't have, but they were, it was the basis of the background traffic, was correlated with the other volumes that were collected throughout the roadway network to come up with the traffic that we used for our model.
I think maybe, maybe I'll, I'll phrase the question a different way. We did our own, well, for this project, there was a separate traffic count done, correct?
There was additional traffic count data collected for this project.
And does the traffic count that was done for the waste transfer station affect their trip generation based on their operations?
It does not.
Does that clarify things?
So, maybe. Let's see. So basically, what you're saying is, you know, Mr. Taylor and his firm prepared the plan that relates exclusively to this application. But part of that analysis was based upon McDonough and Ray's report for the transfer station?
The trip generation.
The trip generation and the traffic count that was in that analysis forms the basis of the original McDonough and Ray study.
Right.
Along with other multiple days of counts that were conducted. Because the transfer station only looked at 547 and Randolph Road, the other data was necessary to be collected at the other four off-site intersections that we studied.
Okay. But I just, I'm trying to get it down to the most base level that I'm capable of understanding. Part of your report was reliant upon McDonough and Ray. What you relied upon McDonough and Ray for, you did not, or your firm did not conduct its own independent data collection for?
That's correct.
Okay. So on those where you relied exclusively upon McDonough and Ray's data collection, does it matter how many days they collected data? Is one day enough?
So they collected data on multiple days, right? As part of the study for our project, which is what we're talking about, they collected data on multiple days.
Then I, I still go back, well, you...
I think one of the confusing things is that McDonough and Ray did the first traffic study for this project, too. So I don't want to confuse the two traffic studies. Maybe that's where the confusion is. Are you asking for the parts of the traffic study for the waste transfer station only?
Yes.
The traffic study for the waste transfer station only that were relied on?
That's correct. What did you rely upon from the waste transfer station conducted by McDonough and Ray?
The, the trip generation that came out of the site.
Okay. And you are aware of how many days they collected data?
The two are independent.
I don't understand. What two, what is independent of each other?
So the number of days they collected data, the background traffic counts, are independent of the trip generation that they utilized in their site because it was provided by the applicant.
All right, let me just get back down to this. So let's go, you relied upon certain data from McDonough and Ray exclusively.
Correct.
So in order for them to generate data, they have to collect it, correct?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, it depends on...
They can, they can rely upon data without collecting it?
Absolutely.
How does it appear?
We use ITE trip generation all the time. And the trip generation...
Does it say that in their report?
It says, as, as I read previously, it says it was information provided by the applicant of that project.
So the report doesn't say they relied upon ITE?
No, it says it was relied upon information from the applicant for that project.
Who's the applicant? Who'd they talk to?
It would, would have been the applicant of the solid waste transfer station. I don't know the answer.
I know, who, who is it, though?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So, but the report doesn't say that they relied upon ITE. It gives a reference to somebody who we don't know representing the applicant. Do we know how many, so we're not sure that they actually collected data at all? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think that, if, if I may, I think the answer is the collection of data goes to the traffic counts. And the trip generation isn't rega, um, isn't, is independent on the data for the traffic counts. The trip generation is a projection.
I'm very focused on the collection of the data right now. So let's just talk about collection of the data. Whatever the data was that was collected, does it matter how many days were reviewed? That's all I'm trying to understand, is, is that relevant or not? Is one day?
One day is sufficient.
Okay. Does it matter what day of the week it is?
We would typically do a typical weekday.
So like a Monday through Friday is typical weekday, or Monday through Thursday?
Typically, we would look at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, sometimes Monday afternoons, sometimes...
Okay.
Right? And, and I think as was previously testified the last meeting, we looked at, you know, we correlated the data for our study based on some, some ATRs or automatic traffic records as well.
Do you know the day of the week that the data was collected, then?
It was collected on Tuesday, March 8, 2016, in the morning, and Monday, March 7, 2016, in the evening.
Okay. All right. Now I think I'm more understanding of what's, of what's transpired here. But there was act, there was actual, the, the McDonough and Ray report, there was actual data that, that they used to support what their conclusions were. It was not based solely upon what the representative of the applicant told them?
That's correct.
Well, for the, for the trip generation, it was solely based on their operational discussion or the definition with, that they got from the owner?
Yes.
There were no counts done to determine what the trip generation is? That's, it doesn't work like that.
As far as I understand, as far as it's set forth in this report, no.
They did not count a similar waste transfer site in order to develop a trip generation? They did not count a similar waste transfer site in order to develop a trip generation?
As far as I know, no.
It was simply on the operational characteristics of the site that's where you're testified.
That's correct.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Go to the next member of the public.
Just state your name for the record again.
We need to speak into the mic, please.
Kathy Novak. The information I got about the, um, McDonough Ray, uh, traffic study can be found by the SWAC, on the SWAC website, Monmouth County Solid Waste.
Mr. Taylor, are you aware that what Ms. Novak just said?
And, and it's, it's on the, the January 25th, 2018, uh, minutes. And I think it might have been court reported, I'm not quite sure. But that's where I got the one day analysis.
You're asking Mr. Taylor if he's aware of that?
I have, I have not reviewed that website, no.
I just wanted to let you know that I didn't pluck it out of the air, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Please step forward.
Ma'am, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Tina Smilek, last name S.M.I.L.E.K., 33 Charles Street, Howell.
Yeah, go ahead.
As I'm not a board member or an expert in any way, as a resident sitting back, I'm sorry, are you okay?
No, but I'll, I'll try to answer the question.
Well, just, I mean, do you need a break? Do you need some water or something?
No, 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 I've been dealing with a cough for a week still.
Okay.
I'll try not to cough in the microphone.
As a resident, this is what I'm hearing you say. You keep saying, based on analysis we received and provided you with, this info is correct. You've used multiple times, assumes my understanding and my opinion. How confident are you in the data that you received?
Extremely. I have full confidence in the data that I received.
Okay, then why do you keep using assumptions, opinions, and?
It's my, my job as a traffic engineer to, to come up with a professional opinion based upon the analyses that I conduct. And so that's, that's why I'm using my opinion.
So this whole thing is your opinion based on what you see? If somebody else walked up here with another traffic engineer, they could have a total different opinion?
No, I don't believe so. Because we base our analysis on national standards and national data, the conclusions of a Level of Service C being a good operation is going to be concluded by, by every traffic engineer that's reviewing that application.
Okay, and you stated that there's no danger at any time?
That's correct, I do not believe there will be.
So you don't think this will create any accidents or any?
I, I do not think that this will increase the frequency of accidents.
Okay. Now, after, if this was approved and you're using all the information saying it's manufacturing, a lot of it is saying you're gonna, most of this project is manufacturing, you're saying?
No, no, this is a warehouse.
Warehouse, warehousing, and that's what your information is based off of?
Yes.
Is there a possibility that can change afterwards? Or if this is approved, you have to maintain it at a warehouse space?
Any changes to it would have to come back to the board for an amended approval or for a new approval, whether it's planning board or zoning board, depending on what the new project would be.
Any changes?
Any changes to the use of it, if it's not a, um, not what was stated at this hearing, yes, it would have to come back.
Okay, what was the reason McDonough, and I don't know if this was asked before, and I'm sorry if it was McDonough and Ray, what was the reason they're no longer being used?
I can't answer that question, I don't know. They contracted me to pick up the study, I, I don't know why it changed.
I think that's an important, I.
Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of law, you know, why an applicant chooses, you know, certain professionals, we, we can't, you know, it may be inter-, it may be very interesting, but it's nothing that we can really, you know, consider.
Okay. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else would like to take a step forward?
How many times have you driven down that road during rush hour?
Two or three.
Okay, thank you.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Lisa Dowd, D.O.U.D., I live at 93 Merrick Road in Farmingdale.
Okay.
So I just have a question. So when, um, cars and trucks are using the same exit to leave at the end of the day?
There are certain driveways that are designated solely for, uh, trucks and solely for cars, but there is some commingling.
Okay, so at the end of a workday, everybody's leaving, everybody's making a left-hand turn. I'm in a car, there's a 73-foot tractor trailer who's making a left-hand turn and he's blocking the road, which is a potential could happen.
Uh, well, not necessarily blocking the road, but there is the potential that there's a car waiting behind a tractor trailer, yes.
Well, if there's a backup of traffic, which according to what you said, there at certain times could be a quarter mile of backup of traffic, and I'm in a 73-foot tractor trailer, I'm making a left-hand turn, and I, there's traffic already backed up, I could potentially be sitting, blocking traffic in the middle of the road.
Um, I, there is that potential, yes.
So anybody who's coming down the road, a bus, I mean, school buses go up and down that road all the time, they'd be sitting there waiting for traffic to move?
So I, I think the queue is going to dissipate. What we're talking about is 5% of the time during the peak hour, or, you know, what was the calculation, 99.65% of the time, that won't occur. However, what happens is the queue backs up and then the queue dissipates as vehicles can exit onto, uh, onto 547. And so while the tractor trailer pulls out, they will then inch forward and pull out of the lane, um, I mean, as, as the queue dissipates.
Well, they don't have a lot of room, I mean, it's only a two-lane road, so.
That's correct, I mean, it, we were widening along our frontage, uh, as part of this project, but yes, it's a two-lane road.
So you're only widening along your frontage to give tractor trailers enough room to actually make a turn so they're not pulling out off the road?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, if I'm in a, if I'm in a 73-foot tractor trailer, I have to pull out far enough to make my turn, which means there's not enough road for me, so.
From the lef-, making the left-hand turn out, we would be utilizing the full width of the existing roadway, that's correct.
Okay, and you said you're improving part of the road?
It was requested and agreed to as part of this application to widen our side of the frontage to give a 20-foot half width.
Okay, so there's no other improvements that are going to be made to Randolph Road?
Um, we will be improving the intersection of Randolph and Oak Glen to provide a left-turn lane, as well as the entire Oak Glen frontage all the way up to Brook and Lakewood, uh, Lakewood Allenwood.
Okay, but no other improvements are going to be made to Randolph Road?
At this point, there have none proposed. We have agreed to work with the board's professionals based upon their review comments in their review letter.
Okay, um, because, I mean, we're all talking about all the traffic that's now going to be on Randolph Road. Our roads are already falling apart.
Please, questions, not testimony?
So you're aware, I mean, Randolph Road, the paving is not that great. The road probably wasn't paved to handle the type of traffic that we're talking about. So there will be a point in time where the whole road does need to be repaved.
As in any municipal roadway, yes. At, at times, they do need to be rehabbed and repaved.
Yeah, but the project that you're proposing is going to provide much more traffic on Randolph Road than would be there without the project. So the road is going to deteriorate much more quickly than it would without this project.
And I think that's one of the reasons we've agreed to widen and redo our 2,500 feet of frontage along, along the project.
So is there a reason why we as a town aren't requesting that the whole road be redone?
Well, the, these questions are only for that witness.
Okay. Is there going to be a point in time when we can ask those questions?
The board, the board acts as like a jury, so you don't get to ask the board questions ever. You could ask the board's traffic engineer a question if you would like, yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have to do one quick clarification, Mr. Taylor, if, if you don't mind, a question. When you keep saying the 95th percentile queue is, is the peak and that happens 5% of the time, that doesn't mean the rest of the time that there's zero, zero queue. It, it tapers down, so say, you know, 20% of the time, it's a little bit less than the peak. So if the peak's at 1,300, it could be down to 1,100 feet or, or 1,000 feet, and it tapers down as, as you go back down to, you know, 0%.
That, that's correct, I mean, there aren't, I'm not saying that 5% of the time, it's that long and then it's zero, the rest of the peak hour.
And at 95.
Mr. Taylor had offered to, because the model doesn't, and I thought I remembered the model did, project queues for other percentages. Mr. Taylor was nice enough to represent that he would calculate and give us the queues for other percentages. So take it, you know, from 50% up, maybe in 10% intervals?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to make the point that the other 95% of the time doesn't mean that there's not, it's still a concern with.
Right, and, and he'll provide those numbers to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, what are they talking about? I know you've given us them several times. Can you give me the peak in and out and the non-peak in and out of trucks only?
Trucks only?
Please.
During the morning peak hour, uh, we anticipate 27 in and eight out for trucks. And during the evening peak hour, we anticipate 10 in and 26 out.
And tractor trailer parking spaces are 376?
Between the loading dock and the trailer parking.
You mean parking spaces for tractor trailer?
There are.
Huh? I thought that was, I thought that was the number, 142 is just tractor.
Yep.
234 is the.
Is the loading docks.
Yes.
Are we waiting for an answer, Rob?
No, I'll give my comments after.
I, I just wanted to clarify, the other queuing percentiles that you asked for, were they 50 and 80% that you would ask for?
Now, Counselor, I asked Mr. Taylor.
Fifty and 85?
No, he's going to start at 50, he's going to give us 50, 60, 70, 80, 90. 10, 10% intervals.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a short break because we've been at this for an hour and 45 minutes. Counselor, I've expressed some concern about the traffic impact on Oak Glen Road. I would like for you to consider providing us the analysis assuming there is a diversion of traffic because of the backup of the queue. And this would focus only on the PM peak hour. I would like for you to provide us a, an analysis of the traffic impacts on Oak Glen Road between Randolph Road and Lakewood Farmingdale Road. And specifically, um, to include the impact analysis of the intersection of Lakewood Allenwood and Oak Glen Road.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the, the request? I just, it was a little bit confusing for me.
Lakewood Allenwood or Lakewood Farmingdale?
I'm sorry, um.
547.
547, yes.
I do the same thing in my head every time.
So the request is to, in the PM peak hour analysis, account for diversion of vehicles from exiting left, exiting left and going to 547, but instead a percentage would utilize the alternate route because of the queue and provide us, um, an analysis, assuming that diversion, for the intersection of Oak Glen and Randolph, and also the intersection for Oak Glen and 547.
Can we also make a request for the AM on that, just due to the school buses on that road?
Sure, I mean.
I'd like to see the AM as well, just because of the school traffic.
I hope everyone in the audience is enjoying Traffic Engineering 101. All right, we're, we're gonna take a 10-minute break.
And will we resume with public, uh, comments when we come back?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I ask if you please take your seats. Eileen, can we please call the roll again?
Sure. Mr. Boyle?
Present.
Mr. Durato?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett?
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
Chairman Nash?
Present.
All members of committee.
Okay, we are going to continue with the public comment, or public question session. If anyone has questions who would like to step forward and ask us of this witness, questions of the traffic engineer.
Hi, Francis Familio, 157 Lanes Pond Road.
Can you just spell your last name, please?
F.S. Frank, A.M.E.L.I.O.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, you said you did a traffic study on five other intersections?
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Did traffic study include five other intersections besides Randolph and 547?
We did five intersections including that, uh, that intersection.
Did you look at Miller Road, which is the first left when you turn right onto Randolph Road? I mean, onto Lakewood Allenwood Road, Lakewood Farmingdale, whoa, shit, sorry, 547?
Strike that.
Strike that, sorry.
We did not, no.
Well, that road leads into Lanes Pond Road, which is direct access to Route 9. And I can't see how tractor trailers are not going to access that road.
So we anticipate the tractor trailer clientele that we, that we would be attracting to be oriented towards the 195 corridor?
Well, that's what you anticipate, but that doesn't mean that's going to be the fact all the time, correct?
That is what we anticipate.
I disagree because I think they're going to use Miller to.
Please, no testimony.
I'm sorry. And you also said that, um, there might be 70 tractor trailers on a Saturday?
Not, not for this use.
Oh, if there's a manufacturing in there, that was what was testified before.
So the manufacturing was provided as a comparison? We do not anticipate, we anticipate three tractor trailers on a Saturday?
For the peak hour, correct.
For the, for the peak hour, that's correct.
Well, Saturday, what would be a peak hour? It's not like a week, workday.
Typically, that would be during the hours somewhere between 11:00 and 2:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Rich Mertens, M.E.R.T.E.N.S., 11 Inkberry Lane, Howell. Good evening, everybody.
Mr. Taylor, the one thing that I haven't heard anything about, has there been any traffic study about the construction phase of this project?
There is not, that's not something we would, we typically look at, um, from a, a planning board application. We look at the overall full build-out, uh, impact of the project.
But with the size, I mean, we're not talking like a one acre property, we're talking about 20 acres. Wouldn't that be some impact down the road? And the, you know, it's going to take years to get this thing done. And I'm just concerned if there's going to be a lot of traffic from that, shouldn't that be part of the overall picture?
Um, that's not something that we typically study as part of a, a planning board application. We look at, once it's open, we don't deal with the, the operation during construction.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Patricia Isbrack Kelly, six, uh, I.S.B.R.E.C.H.T., hyphen K.E.L.L.Y., 615 Fort Plains Road. I'd like to know how many times, as the traffic engineer, you were out to this site?
I've been by the site probably six or seven times, um, two to three during the peak hours.
And have you yourself counted the amount of vehicles and driven in that traffic?
I have driven in the traffic, I have not physically counted the, uh, the traffic.
As a tra-, as a traffic engineer, wouldn't you want to be out there making sure that the numbers you are collecting are correct?
I typically rely on the professionalism of the traffic counters that, that do this for a living. So we, I don't do it even when it's not my project. I have my father, a good friend of mine, my uncle, they, they count traffic for me, they do this as a profession. And so I rely on their expertise to, to conduct the traffic counts.
But as a traffic engineer, you've never been down there? For your own sound mind?
I have been there during the peak hours, I've observed what's going on in the, in the roadway network. And I think it comports with what is represented as the, as the traffic volumes.
And you feel that extra volume will be fine and no problem?
I do.
Have you traveled the, um, roadways right behind Randolph Road off of Oak Glen?
On occasion.
And have you noticed that they're basically rural homes on two-acre lots in a rural area? Do you really think a warehouse in this location is the best location in a rural area with, I think, I believe there are four horse farms on 547, not to mention a soccer field and a football field?
I mean, as a traffic engineer, that's not something we typically look at.
That may be a better question from the planner's perspective, but it is a permitted use, the proposed warehouse use. But it may be a better question for the planner.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to ask a question?
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Hi, Samantha Friedman, F R I E D E M A N, 42 E Shenanigans.
Okay.
Have you, there not going to be any modifications to the 547 Randolph to make that right onto 547?
So, we have submitted a traffic study, we have submitted a warrant analysis to the county indicating that a traffic signal is warranted at that location.
I'm not even worried about the traffic signal, I mean, I'd love a signal, but have you tried to make a right from Randolph to 547?
Yes.
In a car?
Yes.
You, are you able, where the stop line is, to see traffic coming up from 547 from Lakewood towards 195?
You would need to pull forward to a safe distance to observe the traffic.
You need to pull forward almost to where the other traffic is coming to be able to see what traffic is coming up 547?
So, the site distances there could be evaluated to ensure that there's sufficient site distance for the vehicles exiting?
I'm just worried, as I drive a CRV, I'm almost in traffic coming up 547, I have to make a quick right to get onto 547. How's the tractor-trailer going to do that?
As part of our analysis, what we looked at was actually widening that approach to accommodate a tractor-trailer.
Okay, because they fixed that corner multiple times, because that corner breaks down a lot with cars. I'm just wondering how they're going to redo that intersection to widen it, if you're only going to be widening the area in front of your frontage?
So, as part of our analysis, what was identified in the study was the installation of a traffic signal and the modification of the geometry of that intersection to accommodate a two-lane approach on the westbound approach of Randolph Road. This is something that we brought to the county as a suggestion for mitigation to an existing problem that's out there, and it's currently before them for, for that type of review.
Okay, so they're going to put the tractor-trailers farther to the right and then have to try to make a sharp return?
It depends on where the widening would be, there most likely would be an increased radius to that approach, given that widening.
Okay, because there's that retention basin also right there, so that makes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Okay, sir, if you could just state and spell your name for the record?
Mark Parisi, P A R I S I.
And your address, sir?
Two Castle Court.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I was up here the last time and asked you some questions. I ended with a comment that I had seen on the county master plan, that 547 was designated as a scenic road. Do you recall me asking you that?
I do.
Did you verify that?
I did not.
Okay. You testified that the data that is collected for the traffic studies usually collected on a typical, quote typical, it was your word, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, or a Monday afternoon? My question is, why was the study that you're relying upon done on a Friday?
I, I think that was answered at the last hearing, in the fact that we find that the Friday afternoons along this corridor are actually typical.
And there were ATRs done to show that?
That's correct, and submitted to the board for their review.
So, then, why didn't you say that when you said that they're typically done on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or a Monday afternoon?
I don't know the answer to that.
Since your testimony does not specifically contemplate retail traffic, at least I did not hear that, would you or your applicant be willing to condition their application that there would be no retail to guarantee that the traffic is not greater than anything that you've testified to?
I think we've talked about this before, we don't anticipate retail, we're not conditioning beyond what's permitted. We do not anticipate retail here, but we are going to comply with the ordinance of what's permitted at the site.
Mr. Parisi, I think the answer to your question is no.
The testimony is that there will be no change in traffic on the 547 intersections at Maxim Southern Road as well as Old Tavern. I did touch upon this the last time. Frankly speaking for myself, I don't find that to be credible based upon the distribution volume that will be transiting 547 to and from 195. It's been your testimony that all of the traffic is going to be forced out of the Monmouth Commerce Center to 547 and then coming to and from 547 and 195. So, I don't understand how there couldn't be more volume of traffic at those intersections of Maxim Southern and Old Tavern.
Can I, can I answer that question?
Yeah.
My statement that there would be no change to those was in regards to the fact of whether or not there was an installation of a signal at 547 and Randolph. The intent of the volume is to travel through those intersections to get to 195 corridor. So, the analyses of those two intersections would be the same, whether or not vehicles, whether or not there's an installation of a traffic signal or not. And so, the results and the analysis that are in with the traffic study are the same, whether or not the traffic signal is installed.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but you're, the testimony so far that I understand is that without the traffic signal at Randolph, there's going to be much more queuing than if there was a traffic signal. So, based upon that volume itself, how do, how can we not extrapolate that that same volume is going to be present at the intersection, the signalized light at Maxim Southern and at the signalized light at Old Tavern?
It is. It absolutely is, and it's contemplated in the analyses that are in the traffic study. That volume is going through those intersections, and we've analyzed that and provided the analysis within the study. So, we've always incorporated that traffic, traveling through those intersections.
So, then, is it likely there would be increased queuing with an additional 36 trucks per hour in the afternoon and 35 trucks in the, in the morning at those two intersections?
We anticipate slight degradations in the operation. And we, within the study, identify signal timing modifications that could be done at those intersections to mitigate any impact of the project.
And that would be done by the county, since that's a county road, correct?
That would have to go to the county for review and approval.
Okay, has that been done yet? Have you approached the county about that yet?
This traffic study has been submitted to the counties and is under review.
Okay, that touches upon a question that I had later on. I have a question about, last time I asked about the 195 ramps, and you mentioned that there had been no study or analysis of the 195 ramps. Why has there not been any study of the potential increased queuing at the 195 ramps?
We analyze the signalized intersection, and usually, that's the point of analysis from a traffic engineering standpoint, where you have the most conflict. So, we've assumed, we determined that the analysis of that intersection was more critical to the rest of it. And, and we selected certain intersections of critical import through the area to study.
So, you determined that those intersections or those ramps are not critical or not important?
No, we determined that the analysis of the intersection, which is where any, where most queues start and end, is at that intersection. And so, we looked at the intersection and the impact our site generating traffic would have at that intersection.
Have you ever tried to transit that ramp between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM in the, on a weekday afternoon and seen the amount of traffic that's coming through those ramps with the lane changing and the merging and then coming around the bend going south to the Old Tavern intersection? Have you ever witnessed that yourself?
I have, yes.
You have?
Uh-huh.
And you believe that with the increased truck traffic in the PM returning back to the Monmouth Commerce Center, that that additional traffic, truck traffic is not going to cause further queuing for the 195 ramp heading to 547 southbound?
So, during the evening peak hour, the returning truck traffic is anticipated to be 10 trucks or a car every six minutes. Now, they're not all traversing that ramp, they're not all coming from eastbound 195 to southbound 547, there could be from eastbound 35, excuse me, westbound 195. But given that they were talking about a truck every six minutes, no, I do not believe that there's going to be any real impact based upon those.
Okay. What happens if, after this is fully built out, the conditions that you've testified to are not consistent and are, and it's substantially different or more adverse, let's say? What happens at that point?
I mean, essentially, you would have to talk to the, to the county about any future improvements or any signal timing modifications that go along with these intersections.
Yeah, that's interesting. I guess my question now, then, would be to the board's traffic engineer, is that shouldn't this application and traffic study require prior review from the county and the DOT due to the potential queuing on county and state roads?
I can answer that from a legal perspective. I mean, Jim can answer from an engineering perspective, but the municipal land use law recognizes that there's sort of a lot of marbles you got to get into the jar, and they don't require that outside agency approvals be obtained prior to a local land use approval. However, there are some cases that say the absence of an outside agency approval, if it creates, you know, too much uncertainty as to elements that are under the board's jurisdiction, it can be considered. There's a case that involved, I think it was up in Hunterdon or Warren County, it was a dam that was impacting a particular application, and the DEP had jurisdiction over the dam. And the board denied the application because it found that the failure to address the, how the dam was going to be improved impacted the stormwater management analysis to such a degree that the board could not determine whether it complied with, you know, the standards that were under its jurisdiction. So, you can't require them to get outside agency approvals, and there are sections in the MLUL that talk about conditioning approvals upon obtaining outside agencies. But the failure to obtain significant outside agency approvals could impact the board's ability to review an application.
So, then, I guess it begs the question, is would the board consider asking this applicant to condition their approval on them having their traffic studies reviewed and approved at the county and DOT level?
Well, the, the board can, as a standard condition, no matter who the applicant is or how small or big the application is, there's always a standard condition that the applicant has to obtain all outside agency approvals. I guess the question here, though, is, and this would be for Mr. Taylor and, and for Mr. Faia, would be, is this an outside agency approval? Do you consider this an outside agency approval that needs to be obtained?
I guess the, no, we don't. And I think what has been testified to on the record, and I'll ask.
That's 100% incorrect, though. I don't mean to cut you off.
Well, let's just let them.
Are you talking about the signal at the, at the corner?
He asked about the county, county approval.
I thought he was asking about the county approving the traffic mitigation in this study. If you're talking about a county planning board letter of exemption or approval?
Yes.
That's a different question. That I would say yes to.
Well, let's, let's.
I thought the question was about the traffic mitigation measures in the traffic study that were submitted to the county.
Let's, let's get some refinement from Mr. Parisi, he knows exactly what he's talking about. So, Mr. Parisi, listening to that colloquy, what exactly is it that you would be, that you're referring to at the county level?
That the traffic study and potential queuing on a county road and on a state highway would be reviewed and approved so that they know that there's not going to be any adverse impacts once this project has been built out.
So, my understanding, counsel, is that there has been an application submitted to the county planning board for approval?
Yes.
All right. So, we don't control what the county is going to review or not review, so we're dependent upon what they believe is within their jurisdiction? So, it's, you know, generally speaking, the county has jurisdiction over applications that front on a county road or impact county drainage facilities. So, you know, they are reviewing this, but I am unclear, counsel, maybe you can, you can give us something more specific. Are they reviewing this issue of the traffic light and the mitigation outside of the application for county planning board approval, or is that part of your application for county planning board approval?
The application included.
The traffic study, uh-huh.
Yeah. So, my understanding is the application included the traffic signal and the traffic mitigation measures, but an approval doesn't necessarily mean that they are approving those traffic mitigation measures.
That's correct, yes.
Yes. Does that answer the question?
Well, I think that the most we can do, Mr. Parisi, is make it conditioned upon an approval from an outside agency. We can't, we can't say if you don't get a particular approval from an outside agency, you're denied. The law doesn't allow us to do that. But absolutely, you know, there's going to be a condition, if, I mean, assuming that, I don't know that there's an approval, you know, we're not, we're not at that point yet. But let's assume there's an approval. Then, there's absolutely a condition in there that's going to say that they have to obtain either an approval from the county planning board, or the county planning board has to say that, you know, they lack jurisdiction over it.
Okay, and their application for a traffic signal and their application for an approval at the county planning board are two separate applications?
I just, I just asked that, and they.
I think they're the same application, but that doesn't necessarily mean that everything needs to be approved for the county to approve the project.
What, what did you apply for at the county? What application did you file?
I.
You either applied for site plan approval or subdivision approval, that's the only thing you can apply for.
We didn't approve for subdivision approval.
So.
Site plan approval.
You applied for site plan approval for this project, and with that application, you submitted the traffic study and your site plan?
Correct.
And you're either going to get back review letters or a letter of no jurisdiction?
Correct.
And you got a review letter which stated to submit a warrant analysis, correct?
An updated warrant analysis, considering the warrant analysis was in the traffic study, yes.
And that was correspondence we had prior to the last meeting. Has there been any additional correspondence from the county planning board?
There has not. We resubmitted the updated warrant analysis to the county the middle of last week. We have not had any further correspondence back from them in the review.
And.
So, just to be clear, I just pulled it out, this is part of the county planning board application. It's a, it's correspondence from the county planning board. Where's the date on this? Okay, September 9th, 2019. And it's indicated as a request for information, and the request is specifically, the applicant shall submit a traffic signal warrant analysis for the intersection of Randolph and Lakewood Farmingdale Roads. The analysis shall consider trips generated by the proposed development as well as other planned and approved development in the immediately surrounding area. So, it does appear that this is part of their county planning board application. I mean, Mr. Faia is absolutely correct that, at the end of the day, the county's going to determine whether it's going to approve or deny, and if it approves, you know, what it is that it is approving. You know, we don't get to, this planning board doesn't get to influence that process, you know, directly.
And what conditions they.
Well, and as a matter of clarification, just because I believe it was testified to today, if the county doesn't act on the signal and on the traffic mitigation measures that we suggested, is it your opinion that the ingress and egress is still safe for the project?
It is.
Yeah, you testified to that earlier.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But also, just for your information, Mr. Parisi, I mean, that's a, a separate process that's ongoing. I believe the public has rights, you know, with regard to that process as well. So, you know, you may want to contact the county planning board secretary and, you know, see what their agenda is and, you know, how they, what their rules are for public participation.
Okay, but would this planning board wait until they've had a. But would this planning board wait until they've had an affirmative response from that-
We're not-
-planning board before they made a decision on this application?
We can't say that we're not gonna do anything. The municipal land use law requires a decision to be made within a certain period of time. We're actually beyond that. I think we, we're on extensions from the applicant. However, we couldn't, the law doesn't permit the board to say, we are not gonna have another hearing until we hear from the county. It doesn't allow, we're sort of at the bottom, you know, of the, of the pile. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of important work, but, you know, the law doesn't allow us to say we're gonna wait for anything. We can condition, you know, upon these other things happening. And certainly, again, if the board were to grant an approval, it, I couldn't imagine that the board's gonna grant a preliminary and a final approval. It would most likely grant a preliminary approval, and then that would be subject to these outside agency approvals, and there would be a, you know, a separate public hearing process that would go on once the disposition of those outside agency approvals are received. But, you know, again, that's a lot of steps down the road, assuming there's gonna be an approval.
Right. I have one final question then. Then would the township be liable for any traffic impacts on a county or a state road if such adverse impacts were to manifest after the build-out? So, I mean, basically, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, this application's approved, and now there's substantial queuing on a county road and on the 195 ramps, and, you know, the county and the DOT come back to the Howell Township and say, how did you guys approve this application? Look at all this traffic and everything that's going on. It's, now it's the township's job to fix and remedy this problem. Now the township has to put up the capital to fix this problem because it was the township's approval. Mike, that's, that's a concern of mine.
Essentially, they work in cahoots. So to what Ron's point was is, should the board, for example, act favorably? We'd have to have the feedback from the county. So if the county wanted substantial changes, they'd have to then come back to this board. So they are acting, assuming that the county approves in this fashion. The town has no way of obligating the county to that signal. What we're asking is county review these plans. We can, you know, certainly, I think they understand that we have concerns, but we can't act without the county's approval, so therefore, if there were impacts seen down the line, everybody had acted under the faith of those applications.
Generally speaking, there are statutory provisions which immunize municipalities in a lot of these cases. So while they're, you know, someone may sue the town, you know, so long as there was not some kind of unlawful influence in the process, you know, generally speaking, towns are gonna be immunized and boards immunized from future lawsuits.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification explanation. Thank you, board. Thank you.
Welcome.
If you could just state and spell your name and give us your address?
Janet Coakley, 3039 Lakewood Allen Wood Road. The last name is C-O-A-K-L-E-Y.
Go ahead.
You've repeatedly represented that the majority of the truck traffic will leave the facility and head towards 195, yet you've also repeatedly testified that you're, you don't know what occupants will be in these warehouses. So how can you make that assertion that the traffic will be directed towards 195? You must have some feel for who those occupants are likely to be.
So given the size of the development as proposed and the likely tenants that could come to here, we anticipate them wanting to use the interstate roadway network, which is 195.
But again, why are you assuming that it will only be traffic that will be directed to 195? Why couldn't you assume that an automobile dealer down on Route 88 might, might want to store excess inventory there? Why would you might not assume that there's other facilities along Route 9 who might want to store excess inventory there that would direct traffic away from 195 and towards these smaller roadways that are being heavily impacted by traffic already?
So given the long haul trails that we would anticipate for a site like this, they will most likely be utilizing the interstate roadway network, which is why we oriented them towards 195.
It, it makes no sense to me. You're, you're saying that, but you're not saying that you know who the occupants will be. So what types of occupants are you assuming will be located at this facility?
We're utilizing a general warehousing development. We don't have any specific tenants. This is, this is a spec building.
But you're kinda contradicting yourself. You're saying it's always gonna go towards 195. Based on what? I don't understand what you're basing that on.
Based on the utilization of large-scale tractor trailers of an interstate roadway network. So as I said, are there some that might go towards Route 9? There are. Not the, not the big tractor trailers, but some other trucks, there could be. They'll be oriented along Randolph Road out to another county, a major collector roadway, an urban major collector in county Route 547. And while we anticipate that most of them will head to 195, is there a chance that some of them go other places? There are, you know, because it is an urban collector roadway network maintained by the county. But the, the majority of these large tractor trailers will, will be oriented towards the, towards the interstate.
I would argue that it's not an urban intersector roadway area. You're talking a very small country road.
Under the county's definition, it is an urban major collector roadway. I mean, that's how Mon, that's how Monmouth County has defined it.
I would stake what I was gonna say. Thank you.
Just, Mr. Taylor, on, on that, I just wanna go back to a question that was asked before. I guess there was a question as to whether this was actually defined as something lesser than, than an urban collector road by the county. And you said you hadn't confirmed that, but I guess you, what, what did you look at?
So we utilize the NJDOT straight line diagrams to determine the collect, the, the classification of the roadway. Monmouth County does designate certain of their roadways as scenic roadways. They can still be a major collector roadway and an urban major collector roadway with a scenic designation, but I haven't checked the county's designation of whether this would be scenic or not.
Okay. And just on the, I didn't get the full, I don't remember the full name you gave me of what you looked at at the, at the state level. What was that again?
They're, they're called the straight line diagrams, and they're a comprehensive collection of data on mostly state and county-controlled roadways, but some municipally-controlled roadways. And they provide for information such as speed limits, roadway widths, and classification of roadway.
But there was something in there that said that Monmouth County had designated this as a, as an urban roadway?
As an urban collector, the designation according to the straight line diagrams is an urban collector roadway, a urban major collector roadway.
But you, you testified Monmouth County defines it that way. So this was a state document, so I just wanna make sure that-
That's correct.
So the state document relied upon something at the county level?
That's my understanding correct. I apologize for stating that the Monmouth County.
Okay.
Ron, can I get clarification? What's the difference between that definition of a collector road versus Almazda Plan that identifies it as a sub collector road? Is there a difference in a sub collector road versus another collector road?
So the NJDOT has different classifications. They have a minor collector and a major collector. I don't know how that comports with your major and minor collector cert, uh, standards.
So what impact did the, does that classification have on your analysis? Any?
On the capacity analysis, none at all. On the fact that-
Any, any part of your analysis?
On the fact that we are utilizing or accessing a major collector roadway, I think states that the county has determined that this road is designed to collect smaller order roadways and transport it to higher order roadways, such as what's being proposed here.
Now, what I'm saying is, the way you analyzed the ingress and egress, was that dependent upon a particular classification?
No.
So and how do you, in the, in the analysis that you gave us, which is, you know, you know, how this basically works in the context of the various plans that exist on the state, county, and local level, how do you kinda take what's in our local master plan, what the county defines it as, and what the state defines it as, and, and, and sort of come to a fluid understanding of, of why this is a good thing?
So from an analysis standpoint, right, from a strictly capacity analysis standpoint, none of that goes into the calculations. It's a function of the, the existing traffic volumes, the site-generated volumes, the signal timings, and geometry that's physically out there. But the specific classification of roadway doesn't go into that calculation.
So I guess here's my question, 'cause now I've been hearing this a lot tonight, is if it doesn't matter, I mean, why is it part of the testimony? If the fact that, if that designation doesn't impact your analysis, if Title 39 doesn't make a difference, if, if cars going right or left doesn't make a difference, I, I don't understand why, it just seems, you know, whether something's manufacturing or not manufacturing doesn't make a difference. It just seems to kind of take us in, you know, diversions.
I don't know if that was testified to affirmatively for the designation. I think it was in response to a question, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I'm just telling you, you know, whatever Mr. Taylor gives us, we, you know, we take it very seriously.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was in response to a question, and he identified what, what it was based on the classifications that he used.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I just have one more question. Does the designation of a road, collector road, have any impact on whether, does it state whether the road can handle heavy traffic or anything like those kind of information?
Not specifically, no.
Can you give me specifically? What does it specifically say? Does it specifically say a collector road? It doesn't say, you know, a collector road cannot have heavy traffic on it. Does it say what a collector road typically is designated for? What kind of traffic?
I, I don't have the technical definition directly in front of me.
Would that be available?
I, I think, um, we've been asked for a lot of things tonight. It's something that we can put on the list of requests.
Well, maybe if you can, I'm just asking, do you know if it is out there? If that kind of information is out there? What a collector road?
Absolutely, the definitions are, are out there. I just, I don't have them.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up and ask questions? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion of this witness. Counselor?
So our next witness is Mr. Henry Guindi. He's a representative of the applicant, and he's here to testify about the use. There were some questions about how the trailer parking spaces would be used, and is here to testify to that, to the use of the trailer parking spaces on, on the site.
All right. Counselor, I just wanna remind you that we have a hard stop here at 10:30.
10:30, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, you can sit down.
Let me just swear again first. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name's Henry Guindi. H-N-R-Y-G-U-I-N-D-I.
I'm sorry, spell your last name again.
G-U-I-N-D-I.
And Mr. Guindi-
I'll talk into the mic.
N-D-I or N-D-Y?
N-D-I. I like ice cream.
Thank you.
You have to keep that mic right by your mouth.
You got it.
Thank you.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
And can you state your position with the, or how you're related to the applicant?
I am the, one of the principals for Monmouth Commerce Center.
And can you describe your experience with industrial warehouse projects?
So I have best experience over 27 years in warehousing. We're an importer of record. We're an importer of household goods, and we've been doing it for 27 years.
And in your experience, do industrial warehouse projects typically have, nowadays, in modern industrial warehouse projects typically have parking spaces for trailers?
Absolutely. It's, it's part of the, it goes hand in hand.
And how are these trailer parking spaces used? When would they be utilized?
They will be utilized as trailers come, and if there are no doors available to unload them, they wait in the parking spots. It could be a day or two, and then once a door comes available, they back in and they unload them.
So wouldn't it be long-term, like months long, they're gonna be stored there or anything?
No, it can't be long-term because they have to be returned to the port.
Okay. That, that's our complete testimony for the trailer parking spaces.
I have just a couple of questions. I just wanna make sure. We've talked about it, you know, progressively, so I wanna make sure I keep up to, keep up. There was early testimony, and I wanna see if this is the same area that we're talking about, that there would be tractor trailers that would be parked, and the drivers would actually, you know, have the ability to, to like sleep in the trailers overnight? Is, is this, is this the same area that we're talking about, or was that, is that not part of the application anymore?
No, they're not sleeping in the trailers.
All right, so there's no, nobody's gonna be sleeping overnight in the trailers?
No.
All right.
Where do the drivers go once, if they, uh?
So they un, they, they unhook, they unhook the trailer, the tractor, the tractor, and then the trailer's behind it? So what you do is you un, you drop the container, you unhook the trailer, and you leave.
How do you get the trailer, so are they empty trailers that are gonna be over there?
They could be full or empty, but they won't be there for longer than 24 to 48 hours.
So if they're full and the truck has left, is the truck coming back, or there's a different truck that's coming? How does it get to the dock?
So, so it's usually a few companies that are assigned to pick up the trailers from the ports, or whoever, you know, it's, they can have 20 trailers for one cab. So as he comes, he drops one, he takes one, he takes, he pulls the other one out. It's very simple procedure.
So not knowing your users, how do you know that that's how this is gonna operate?
Well, I'm a, I'm one of the users that are anticipated being in there, and that's how we operate.
You are a principal of the applicant, and you intend on being one of the users? I thought the testimony was that you didn't, you didn't know who the users were gonna be.
We, we have testified to that, and we said the parent company, Kennedy International, is planning on potentially taking space in one or two buildings. We have said that these are being built on spec. We don't know the tenants, but one potential tenant is the parent company of the applicant.
So I mean, would all of the, the potential tenants operate in that same manner?
Is that, is that typical in your experience of how it's operated?
In, in my experience with warehousing, that's the key. 99.99% is how it may operate. It's like having a shopping center without parking spots.
And we would agree to a condition of approval of not allowing them to be stored in a space after a certain time. Our position has been that the outdoor storage is identified as 96 hours, even if it's not for this type of use in other parts of the Howell ordinances. We will agree to a condition of approval that nothing can be parked or put down there for more than 96 hours if the board were inclined to grant an approval.
So all these trailers, just to make it clear to you, they're on wheels. These wheels are owned by the steamship companies or by the ports. They have to be returned. You can't leave them on-site. They have a certain window. Every day that they stay on a service, the warehouse, it costs $100, then it doubles, and it doubles, and it doubles. So within a week, you're talking about paying $3,000 per trailer that's parked in your parking lot. You don't want that. Nobody wants that. Nobody will pay for it.
Assuming the users are who you say they are, and the trucks are coming from where you think they're coming from, but-
But they're not trailers that are like unloading and this putting on the floor. They're on wheels, they gotta be returned.
Return, I mean, but you're speaking for tenants that don't exist and how their operations exist, right? I mean, you can speak for yourself, certainly, but you're not, you're not representing that you're gonna be occupying all of the space, right?
No, I'm not.
Correct.
Right, all right. And, and counsel, I just wanna, and we'll probably discuss this more, you know, in subsequent testimony.
And we are gonna have a planner talk about it some more.
But I just wanna say, your 96 hours, that's the one that comes out of the littering ordinance, right?
Yes, that's, that is our indication from the Howell ordinances of how Howell has defined outdoor storage, not in the land use chapter, in a separate chapter, that after 96 hours, it becomes outdoor storage. Even though they exclude this type of use, we would agree to a 96-hour limitation.
Well, when your, when your planner gets up, we'll talk about whether-
We'll, we'll talk about it more with the planner, but I don't think anybody would consider outdoor storage if a trailer was parked there for, say, one hour.
Well, I don't know what everyone's gonna consider, but we have, we have an ordinance.
Yeah, park there for an hour- Parked there for an hour, and then leaves after an hour, that's not...
Right, well, but that's not what the testimony is.
Yes, so I'm saying, at some point, the line has to be drawn. We look towards the Howell ordinances, and our planner will testify more to this, and we saw 96 hours, and we agreed that it wouldn't be longer than 96 hours.
And who controls that?
That would be a condition of approval.
So who on-site is gonna be enforcing that condition?
Yeah, we could put in the leases.
We can put it in the condo docs, if that's, if the board grants a condition of approval, we can put it in condo documents for this, or in leases, that nothing could be parked in those spaces for more than 96 hours straight.
So is it safe to say that this is based on individual trailers? So one comes in, one leaves, but one's gonna replace it, so there's always gonna be trailer parking there, correct?
I mean, as needed. Yeah, it, there could be a time where there's none, and there could be a time where one comes in, one comes out.
And there could be a time when there is...
60 come in and 60 come out, and then 60 get replaced.
That's the point of the parking spaces.
But that's my point, is it's based on individual trailers, but it seems like there's always gonna be trailer parking there.
Normally, we have, where I come from, we have about over 300,000 square feet of warehouses currently, there's almost never any trailer there. It's only when there's like a peak season, when there's a rush, you might get a few spots taken up, but it doesn't stay there more than a day.
But again, I don't know.
For the most part, it's empty.
If we don't know the tenants, it's gonna be hard to judge.
You're right that they could be utilized more often, and that's the point of the trailer parking spaces, is when the loading docks are full. That's why they're there, is the parking spaces are there for when the loading docks...
But as an example, if you see like a FedEx, right, there's always FedEx parking there. They're never empty. There's always FedEx trailer parking there. They're in and out, but something comes in to replace them, and that was my comment, is it based on just an individual trailer coming in and out, and that's the 96 hours? Or is, you know, does a clock reset on that thing leaves, and something comes back in?
It would be reset when one leaves, kind of like a car parking, you wouldn't, if a car, the same car parking space, a car could come in, and then it can leave, and then another car could come in after.
So you're gonna have somebody just walking around checking license plates?
Yeah, we do.
I mean, if it's a condition of approval, as any condition of approval, if it's being violated, it can jeopardize the entire approval. We would have incentive to make people comply with it. Any condition of approval, the applicant has an incentive to self-enforce it too, or to have it being enforced on the site, because it could jeopardize the entire approvals.
Can I ask a question? Your driver, the truckers that you employ, are they contract truckers?
Yeah, we don't employ them, they're contract truckers.
Okay. Most of them have cabs that allow them, the extended cab, to allow them to sleep in the truck. When the driver comes in and drops a trailer, well, let me ask, what is the maximum number of hours that a driver can drive until he has to go to his mandatory rest period?
I'm not sure.
10 hours.
I think it's eight hours a day, maybe?
10 hours?
10 hours, 8 hours, 10 hours, something like that.
So what happens, where does that trucker go? Forget about the trailer, all right, the cab, he can't drive 24/7, all right? Where does he go to rest?
The guy who's coming to pick up wouldn't come to us unless he's ready to pick up. The pickups will get done on the spot. Pickups are immediately. It's only when you're unloading full containers.
That's your operation. Can you comment on the possible operation?
I can't comment on other people's operation, I can tell you what I know from my experience.
Are you familiar with the warehousing that Amazon has established over in Robbinsville?
I just wanna, just, I don't mean to interrupt, I just wanna note that we have said that this won't be a fulfillment center, so I don't want to cut your question off, but I just want to note that we have said this won't be a fulfillment center like Amazon, so it may be different operations. And now, I don't want to cut off your question, but I just wanted to note that, remind you that it was stated probably at the first or second hearing, so this is going to operate differently, this is a general warehousing, it won't be a fulfillment center.
Okay, so, understood, and I appreciate that. Can you tell me, will you have overnight parking where truckers are sleeping?
It's not common for the truckers to sleep in somebody's place.
Is that permitted by the ordinance?
Well, that's something that we'll have to discuss, but I guess, you know, whether we discuss it or not, is sort of contingent upon whether that's part of this application.
We'll look into that before the next hearing about what's permitted and what's not, and I don't think it's been...
So, I just want to be very clear then, because previously, and I'm sorry, is it Mr. Gundy, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
It's okay.
Mr. Gundy, I thought you said previously, no, no one's gonna sleep there.
They don't normally, nobody sleeps.
All right, so counsel, based upon what you say, you don't want to limit yourself from what you believe is permitted on the site, and you want to determine whether that's permitted or not.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll take a double, we'll double-check that, correct.
All right, well, that's gonna be something that, you know, if we, we're sort of near, we're gonna be after 10 o'clock after, you know, the public, but I think that, you know, if I could predict for your planner, there's gonna be three ordinance issues that we're gonna need to go over beyond other stuff, which are, you know, your interpretation of storage, and whether that satisfies the ordinance requirement. Two is gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to determine what the impact of a parking area where truckers are sleeping there, for, you know, you could stay there for three days, I guess, you know, or however many days 96 hours is, not my forte. But, and then also whether relief is necessary from the tree replacement ordinance. So, Mr. Bossom? I would say also, you know, that's something that you may want to look at also, and if you feel the need, the board would certainly accept, you know, we've received some legal analysis from Mr. Faye, you know, we can receive more. We certainly accept anyone who wants to submit, you know, a legal brief or anything, you know, with regard to the need for variance relief, or, you know, even any other topic that I haven't raised, but if you want to submit something, you know, you're more than welcome. Just CC Mr. Faye on it.
And I would like to...
Can I just ask, clarify, did you say they already submitted something? Or they hadn't submitted something yet?
I have to check the record, they may have submitted, I'm not sure. But if they have, we'll make it available to you.
We will agree to a condition of approval that no, nobody will sleep on-site at the site.
I just wanted to ask a quick question, because I do remember that you did say it was Kennedy International, because you're the only customer, I'm just gonna ask for my own, or known customer. What type of square footage would you be leasing for your products there?
One or two of the buildings, anywhere from 150 to 300,000.
So 300,000, okay, so your product is gonna be completely imported, so you're gonna have it into the port in Newark, and then you're gonna go, how's it go from there, down to the turnpike, all the way out to 195, and then down Route 9?
I don't know the routes they take, but normally they come, right now where they come from is from the Elizabeth, Port Elizabeth.
Okay.
And that's the Old Bridge, correct?
The Old Bridge in New Jersey, correct.
Well, they're not coming down the Parkway, we know that, so...
Well, they come, they might come down, Route 9 to 18 to the Parkway, because trucks are permitted south of 105.
105, okay. So, your product, because you can only speak to, what's the average weight of your shipment? When you bring it in, are you bringing in a full container, you doing truckloads, LTLs?
Full container loads.
Okay, so what's the total weight of that?
15 to 20,000.
15 to 20,000 pounds, okay. And how, in, what'd you say, 300,000 square feet? How much product can you fit into that? Just an estimate, I know it's kind of a tough question.
That's, yeah, that's, how do you, how many products and what weight, volume, cube, what?
Yeah, in cube, yeah. Should be able to figure out cube, how many pallets are...
Depends if it's racked, if it's unracked, if it's on the floor, I mean, it all varies how you store it, narrow aisle, deep, double-deep.
Because wouldn't that have an impact on the traffic study? I mean, was there a traffic study figured for that type of...
Traffic study is based upon square footage.
Square footage of each capacity.
Yeah, I think you're getting a little bit deeper than the traffic study.
What we can. Okay, okay, that was it, that was, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, I just want to just go over, so you're saying the applicant is owned by an entity called Kennedy something or other?
Kennedy International Incorporated.
Because I'm just looking at the...
I think they're a related entity, is it? I forgot the...
The disclosure statement says that Mammoth Commerce Center is owned 100% by Howell Industrial Complex, and Howell Industrial Complex is owned by Mr. Gundy, HJSF Realty.
I apologize if I said parent company, it's a related entity with the same principles for Kennedy International.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Does the board have any more questions? On your operation, will you have a yard jockey to move trailers around when the drivers have left?
No, we don't keep a yard jockey on-site, because we don't, normally don't have that much movement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just two quick questions, just to kind of fill in the gaps, a lot of the questions I had have been addressed, but is there a particular tenant type that you find is more of a challenge in terms of needs for long-term parking of trailers versus other types?
No.
No, okay. Do you have any, are there any plans for, or need to have a fee for parking for trailers or the tractors for any length of time on the property?
Say that again, I gotta understand the question.
A fee for parking? In other words, if a tractor or trailer?
No, 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 no pay for parking, no.
Okay, it would just be by distinct tenant would have their own operation?
Correct.
All right, thank you. That's all I have for this witness, a lot of my questions are for the planner.
Board, any other professionals have questions?
I just, I have to go back in my notes, I think we may have addressed it one way or the other, but I just want to, instead of spending my time looking through that, refrigerated trailers, are they, I mean, our ordinance doesn't regulate it, so I'm assuming refrigerated trailers are a possibility?
Could be, but they're not, I mean, they're not spec to build any refrigerated warehouses.
They're not what?
It could be, it's a possibility. I don't know if the specs right now are intended for that, but yes, it's a possibility.
So there's a possibility of cold storage in the warehouse?
This may be a better question for our engineer, I think it was addressed earlier by our engineer, but I think it's a better question for our engineer.
Oh, no, it's an operation question, I just want to know who's coming, you know, that's what this testimony is about, now this witness is testifying who's coming or not. So, you know, and I'm not just, whoever you want to pick, you know, say, Wakeford, you know, comes in and wants to have a warehouse there, and they're gonna store stuff. I mean, they're not, are they returning trailers that they need to get out by a certain amount of time, because they're bringing stuff in from Elizabeth, or do they, you know, is that type of operation different?
Normally, all warehouses, from my experience, have to have turn.
Have to have what?
Turnover, meaning it's got to run and out. Nobody wants a sitting truck doing nothing.
No, but your testimony earlier was that, you know, was based upon, it's gonna cost people, because you gotta get, you gotta return stuff to the dock, and, you know, I had asked you whether, you know, that's something that is obviously specific to you, but maybe different, you know, for other tenants.
And I think the answer was yes, that's typical in his experience, it just could be different for other tenants, because this building is being built on spec.
Now, you also talked about like busy season, I mean, does that in some way depend upon what it is you're storing? I mean, different types of product may have different busy season, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
And do you anticipate tenants who may own their own tractor-trailers?
It's possible.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add something here. I spent 40 years in the trucking industry. And the trucking industry doesn't want a trailer parked, and what we do in the trucking industry is we charge extra if a trailer is left over a certain period of time, and usually it's 24 hours free time, and after that, the fees that we charge, they don't want to pay. So they're not gonna let that trailer sit, depending on who the trucking company is, whether it's an LTL trucking company, or whether it's a truckload carrier. And those rules are governed by the ICC. They, we have this put into effect, and every trucking company is a part of that, because they hold an international license or a domestic license. And a trucker, if he's an independent, he doesn't make money if his truck is sitting, so he's gonna get in there, he's gonna get empty, and he's gonna move on to wherever his dispatcher sends him. So his wanting to sleep there, as a trucker, I don't want any of my drivers sleeping on private property, that's what they make truck stops for, and they would go out here on the turnpike, or other areas where there's rest areas, and that's where they would bed down for the night in their sleepers. So, the gentleman is telling you right that his trucks are in and out of there.
Yeah, but with all due respect, Mr. Ball, he's given testimony based on his company, and we don't know what the other companies are gonna be, so I could understand your 40 years' experience in that, but I just think it was important that we get the testimony of what?
But in general warehousing, this is the way it works.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to, the board's not witnesses, so you can accept, you know, you can feel that this is persuasive testimony, but when you are placing testimony on the record, you know, it's beyond where a board member is, you know, is going, because you're not evaluating their testimony anymore. You can use your personal experience to accept their testimony, but, you know, I think, you know, you're coming up to the line of becoming a witness, which the board members are not permitted to be.
I'm just explaining to the board members how the industry works, because of their questions on the trailers sitting for a period of time.
Respectfully, he ended the statement about how it relates to the testimony that has been given, so I think the intent was...
I understand what the intent is, but what I'm telling all board members is that you're here to evaluate testimony, not to provide testimony. Whether, you know, speaking nothing about the quality, you know, or the accuracy, you know, you're allowed to use your experiences on a local, your knowledge about local issues, local conditions, you know, under the municipal land use law, but, you know, it's not me, it's just the municipal land use law does not allow board members to say, you know, I'm in a profession, I have some expertise, and I'm gonna opine, it just doesn't. And, you know, you're allowed to do that out here in the public, but you're not allowed to do it up there. It's just, and it's not me, it's not my view of it, it's just what the law says. I mean, board members, you can obviously, you know, reject my counsel, but I'm just telling you what the law says. It's, I don't have to like it, you don't have to like it, but that's what I think the law says.
Thank you, Mr. Cuchiar. Does the board have any other questions of this witness? Seeing none, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bossom, I'm sorry.
Craig Bossong, on behalf of Hope, I just have one question. With how quickly you're testifying that the turnover is for these trailers, what's the necessity, when you have 234 loading docks, to have 142 trailer parking spaces or storage spaces? Why could those spaces not be eliminated and more... Why could those spaces not be eliminated and more green space put on the site and better circulation?
So, I think the question, and I don't wanna misstate it, is why do we need the trailer parking spaces?
Right, why 100, why 142 trailer parking spaces?
It's, it's, it's industry standard for warehousing, and it's only because if some of the loading docks are taken, you need somewhere to park, park them.
You have 234 loading docks, so you're saying it's industry standard to have 65% of loading docks in addition as trailer parking spaces?
So, not all the loading docks are for inbound, you have, most of the loading docks are used for outbound, you can't let a trucker wait to come pick up goods, he's gotta get in, he's gotta get out as quickly as possible. So, it's only 20% of what's there, or 30% of what's there is for inbound. So, given that fact, you gotta calculate the ratio that way, not at the full trailer doors or parking spots.
And to be fair, all of those loading spaces aren't being used by one tenant, so each tenant will have a certain amount, so that one tenant may need a trailer parking space because their individual loading docks are full.
Well, that's, I, I understand that, but we're talking, the testimony was, you wanna get these in and out as quick as possible, otherwise it's gonna cost money, and nobody's gonna leave them there, they're gonna come in, they're gonna drop them off, they're gonna leave, they're gonna come back and pick them up. The necessity of having 142 trailer parking spaces without a, a jockey that's gonna move them from the loading dock to the, to the spaces?
So, let me, let me explain that to you.
Okay.
You have 10 doors, three of them are, five of them are used for unloading. Now, I got another trailer coming, your backup door number, your backup trailer number six at the door number six, you take out door number five, no jockey, same trailer, takes one, puts one, takes one, puts one.
Okay, then, there is why the need for 147 trailer parking spaces to store them in, if the guy's moving these in and out.
If you get more, if you get incoming, a blitz of incoming one day.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just follow up on that? If you get a blitz in, the, the testimony is 27 in, peak eight out?
If, if.
If what?
Well, I, I, I don't wanna go beyond his expertise for traffic expertise, if the question is...
But he's an expert in the operations of the, of the, of the site, right?
Correct, yeah.
So...
Well, he, he's being used to, yes, explain testimony of the operations of the site and how the trailers are anticipated to be used.
Well, the board certainly has a right, however, to ask him questions if it appears that his testimony may be inconsistent with the numbers that were relied upon to determine peak hours and, and numbers for those peak hours.
And I think the, the key is though each individual tenant only has cer, will have a certain amount of space, so if that, if say the peak hour is a certain amount for one tenant, then they may need a trailer parking space, it may only be for an hour.
I'm sorry, I didn't wanna cut you off. You're done?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. But I think the question that Mr. Nacaster had was, there was a talk about when there's a blitz, I think Mr. Nacaster was asking...
So, if I, if I only have 10 trailer spots in my warehouse, because I'm not getting 147, I only have one warehouse, I'm only gonna get 10% of that, 147, but you give me 14 extra spots.
No, but I think the question was more about, let's talk about what the blitz is, how many, how many trucks are you talking about?
So, if you get an extra 10 trucks that week?
Over the course of the week?
Yes. Or 20 trucks over the course of the week, you need those spots, you might need those spots.
So, you're saying the trucks that are in the loading area are there for up to a week?
The loading area?
Yeah.
No.
Trying to rationalize.
Load, you get, you, to unload them normally, you unload them as quickly as possible, and usually takes a few days to unload.
I mean, I'm, I'm confused, I, I understand this gentleman's testimony is that there's going to be a rapid turnover because a truck comes in, drops a trailer, pulls another trailer, and off he goes. And when, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding this, this blitz and this peak, all right?
So, let me, let me clarify this with you.
Please.
Okay. When somebody's picking up, they need to get in and out as quickly as possible, they're picking up, they're not waiting for anything. And if you're loading something that's going overseas, you have to load it by hand, it's gotta be manually loaded on a container. So, instead of loading 26 pallets in about 15 minutes, you have to load it by hand, which takes about eight hours to load for one person. So, that's where you're getting a little, you're not understanding.
I, I don't wanna confuse the peak hour versus how long a trailer's going to be in there, I think it's a fair question of if they were going in and out within, say, 15 minutes, but if it takes longer for one trailer, for one tenant that may have extra trailers there when they're occupying the loading spaces, that's when the trailer parking spaces are being used.
I, I have a quick question. Did you review your operational analysis, your operations with the traffic engineer to make sure, you know, his analysis as far as trip generation is consistent with your operation?
Yeah, yes, we did.
Has Mr. Taylor been on your existing facility in Old Bridge?
I think that would be a question for Mr. Taylor.
He should, he would know if Mr. Taylor's been on this site.
He has been.
All right, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who would like to ask questions of this gentleman's...
Down at Coakley 3039 Lakewood Allenwood Road, and it amazes me that within five minutes we seem to have identified 25% of the occupation of the warehouse. I'd like to know what products you ship, whether that includes chemicals, hazardous materials, hazardous waste, anything of that nature, and how has it been addressed as to whether the warehousing can be used by other occupants for hazardous materials?
We do not, we do not warehouse any hazardous materials or any of what you just described, we do household merchandise, things that you use in your house on a daily basis.
Okay, and how are we going to prevent other occupants from storing hazardous materials?
I, I just, I just wanna state, at a previous hearing, we testified, agreed as a condition of approval that we wouldn't be storing hazardous materials in the warehouses. We stated that as any condition of approval if there wouldn't be hazardous materials stored on site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you just state and spell your name for the record and give us your address?
Yeah, my name's Robert Johnson, 757 Oakland Road. My concern, is there any kind of ordinance against these reefer trucks that make noise all night with the refrigeration on top? Are we living neighborhoods nearby, are we gonna be punished to hear that all the time? Is there any restriction to having a reefer trailers? Because I know this is a big thing in a lot of other areas in Monmouth County.
Can we give the applicant a chance to respond to the questions?
I'll just respond, two things I just wanna say, one is there are noise ordinances that we will comply with, so any type of noise ordinance there is in their state levels, and also, just wanna make sure, you said, what was your name again, sir?
I'm Robert Johnson.
On Oakland Road?
Correct.
I think you're represented by counsel, just...
No, I'm not.
Is your, is it Bob Johnson and Kathy Johnson on Oakland Road?
That's where we are. We're not represented, we're not represented by counsel.
Ron, they're just, do you wanna update the list?
Where, where, where are they?
Uh, the second page. It's fine, we'll remove you from the list, I just wanna make sure the list is accurate.
Yeah, my concern is, like I said, the noise ordinance is gonna give you more...
Well, I wanna make sure that you, Mr. Johnson, hold on.
Okay.
I ask at the beginning of every meeting.
You can lift that, you don't have to...
Okay.
You know, if the, if the list is accurate or not. Mr. Bossong, I want you to contact every single one of these people before the next meeting to, to make sure that, because it seems a little too fluid, you know?
With all due respect, this was the first person this evening, out of probably about 40 members of the public that spoke earlier, so I, I, I'll update the list.
I'm just asking you to know who your clients are, that's all. All right, Mr. Johnson, continue.
Yeah, also too, besides the refrigeration and the noise that those things can make the burden of it, is there a weight restriction to these trailers that are fully loaded? Because my family, truck drives for a living, and I know these trailers can weigh way over 50,000 pounds, so what he's saying 15, 20,000 pounds, he's, he's not near correct. These things can hold 40 pallets for, over 40, 50 pallets.
Well, let's, let's let them answer.
They asked me when I bring in, how much my trailers normally weigh, that was my answer, I can't speak for, if somebody brings in, I don't know what other people bring.
Okay.
And Mr. Johnson, if you just...
Sure, can.
On your noise issue, counsel, you referenced that there's a noise ordinance, are you aware, are there state DEP regulations concerning the idling of vehicles?
I believe so. I, I think I would have to double check with our engineer, but I think there are, I think it might have even been stated on the record that we would comply with, with those regulations.
May 19, May 9, your engineer represented no idling of vehicles.
Yes, thank you.
But idling of reefer trailers?
No idling.
Doesn't matter, matters not with the vehicle.
Because they've got diesel engines in them that run 24/7, I'm, I'm aware of that.
Well...
So, that, that'll mean, you're saying now then they won't be able to have reefer trailers running out there 24/7 while I'm trying to get sleep?
What we're saying is, no matter what the vehicle is, or what its capabilities are, those are the restrictions.
Okay, thank you for your time.
If there's an approval.
Mr. Chairman, as maybe the next member walks up, the only thing I also wanna point out, and perhaps it's for the, your next witness, but also at May 9, your engineer represented that there would be no retail sales on the site, and we did hear differently about that tonight, so I just wanna make sure that the record is complete and that things that were previously agreed to don't get lost.
Okay, so we...
The applicant has the right, you know, to, to modify, so I mean, we can certainly point that out, but there's no restriction against them, you know, changing their mind, you know, tonight.
Okay.
Say your name again first, please.
Tina Smilak, 33, Charles Street. I just wanna know, is there any subleasing to these warehouses?
Well, I... Confuse me about what you mean about subleasing.
So, he rents two warehouses, and then he decides not to use it for his products, but he wants to sublease to somebody else to utilize part of his warehouse space? Is he allowed to do that?
Yeah, I, I think it would have, I mean, depending on what the condo association documents state, that may have to go to the condo for approval, but I don't think there's any restrictions on a subleasing.
Okay. And you just opened an Old Bridge in 2018 warehouse?
Correct.
And is that gonna be just the same kind of business?
Yes.
And you just ran out of space there, so you need more?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I just have one thing I just need some clarity on, and I think everyone has like their own general understanding of this statement, but I think we just need to be a little more specific. You know, there've been several statements that, you know, this is not gonna be a fulfillment center like, you know, Amazon, it's a more traditional warehouse, but I think counsel, if, maybe if we could just provide something a little more specific as, what's the difference? You know, so that, you know, if there is an approval, I can place that in the resolution.
I think, well, I think we have stated it, both our traffic expert and our civil engineer has stated what the difference is, and...
I'm not so sure there's a concise statement as to what the difference is.
And Mr. Taylor, you are still under...
Yes, I understand that. So, unfortunately, there's not a hard and fast definition at this point of what a distribution or fulfillment center versus a standard warehouse. What I can tell you is the operation is completely different, the amount of employees and parking spaces and loading docks required for...
Yeah, but that's not really what I'm asking, I'm asking, what are the characteristics that make them completely different?
I think, I think that's where he's going.
Sorry.
Okay.
A fulfillment center requires a much higher employee count because it's typically taking and packaging large-scale packages into smaller distribution-sized things, so your, your Amazon delivery, right, is going out to some of the FedEx people, some of the UPS, but it all comes into one large area and then gets broken down into individual deliveries. It has a requirement, a much higher requirement for vehicular parking, it typically has a much higher requirement for loading docks than what is proposed here. And I believe as part of my direct testimony, we agree that this, we are not proposing a fulfillment center.
No, I, I understand that, but your testimony tonight is, there's no precise definition. So, when I put into a resolution that it's not permitted to be a fulfillment site, and it lacks a definition as to what a fulfillment site is, no one's gonna know, or everyone's gonna disagree as to whether the operation is a fulfillment site or not, so I, I need, and look, you know...
Ron, we're, we're coming back.
You know, you, you may finish up and get an approval in seven minutes, I don't know, but I'm thinking not, so maybe that's something, you know, that, and probably, it's probably more within the planner's testimony anyway, you know, that, that the planner can come and testify to at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the, the planner is probably the better person for it, but I think the testimony has been, it's not designed in a way that you would be able to have a fulfillment site.
I know, but when I say, when I use the word, someone needs to understand what it means.
Yep.
Understood.
Can, can you, you know, give us the differences in like, say, employee count as would be for fulfillment, fulfillment center, as would employee count for a general warehouse?
Right now?
No, I meant, find that data.
Yes, absolutely, I mean, we, we've done a couple Amazons, I can, I can pull what we need required for that as opposed to something for this.
Thank you.
Okay, it's...
Mr. Chairman, I just got one question, but end of the night.
You're killing me, Nick.
And it might, might, might have been asked at previous meetings, is there a potential that any of the tenants could have 24/7 operations?
I, I think the testimony was yes.
I, I believe so, I don't think there's any hours of operation limitation in the ordinance. There are noise ordinances that we would have to be complied with, so that would potentially limit some operations after certain time periods.
Okay, as I was saying, I turn into a pumpkin soon. By show of hands, is there anyone in the public that would like to ask questions of this witness? The reason being is I wanna know if we need to bring this witness back at the next meeting. Anyone? All right, so counsel, I'm gonna close the public portion of questions for this witness.
Thank you.
And we're going to carry this application till...
November the 7?
To when?
November 7.
Counsel, this is...
Yes, November 7.
Do we need an extension of time?
Yeah, we will extend the municipal land use law deadline to act until November 8.
Thank you.
All right, so case number SP 105 to Monmouth Commerce Center, will be carried to the board's November 7, 2019 meeting, beginning 7 o'clock here at Town Hall, here in the main meeting room. If you've received a written notice at some point of these meetings, you will not receive another one, this is your notice. If anyone wishes to review any documents, you can contact Eileen in the planning department or just come during normal business hours.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Boyle, Mr. Everett is the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.